I think we can address those points. I want to start with letting Jack Waghorn from NV Commercial talk about the retail component that we're now proposing along Maple Avenue.
Jack Waghorn from NV Retail. Turn the lights down.
Maybe?
Right here.
This one?
There you go.
That was easy.
We, I believe, the two comments that I took away from the meeting the last time we got together were pretty straightforward. There was a canyon effect, I think someone called it, of the two buildings facing each other on Maple Avenue, and we didn't have any retail on Maple Avenue. We went back to the drawing boards, literally, in this case, and we've come up with a concept that's been used for years in the shopping center industry and the retail industry, and we're naming it Portico Retail. And it's essentially small space retail that is attached to the front of a building that allows a retailer to operate within the confines of that space. And it's used for incubation of smaller retailers, it's used for mom-and-pop kind of spaces, and we see a number of different varieties of that here where we could have a florist, a tobacco shop, a coffee shop, a newsstand, any number of different retail uses on that side that would be very beneficial to both the people in our project as well as the other folks living on Maple Street. What we've done is, we've -- do we have a plan? Michael, where'd you go? Oh, sorry. What we've done is, we've activated the corner. This is the corner of Tanner and Maple. What we've done is, we've added this Portico Retail all down Maple Street in a number of key areas. This retail space is approximately 12, 10 to 12 feet in width, which is roughly the size of this area from here to the wall. It's small, it's small shop retail space, it's meant for mom-and-pop retailers, it's meant to be accessible from the street, it's meant to provide quick, easy in-and-out, you know, kind of retail spaces. These would be used, as I said before, for anything from newsstands to coffee shop, bagel stores, it could be a small bakery, it could be any number of different things. But what it does is, it articulates the front of our building dramatically, and you'll see in the plan view in a minute that this creates an effect, as a pedestrian walking down the street, you'll have plenty of interest on our side of the street, with lots of indentations in the building, areas for seating, where the building pops out, we'll have lots of glass, so you'll see into these retail spaces. I think it's an excellent innovative solution for what we're attempting to achieve here, which is twofold. We're going to have retail on Maple, which has been difficult for us to conceive because of the levels of the building, because of the slopes we're dealing with, where interior walls meet exterior walls. This provides us a very, very nice alternative for that. Secondary to this is, this is a bit of an add-on to the building, which means it's an add-on to our pro forma, which means we don't need as much retail, we don't need as much rental revenue from this as we do for our larger interior spaces. These spaces will be filled out to what we call a vanilla box retail condition, which is essentially the storefront in place, the rear wall ready to accept the final finish from the retailer, a floor that's finished, and they can move in their merchandise and be open in virtually days as opposed to months as it will take to finish out the other retail spaces. These also provide a balcony here on the, for the first-floor tenants, and we're still integrating that into the overall design, but I think that it provides yet another reason for, you know, perhaps these plantings on this balcony area can add another bit of relief to the massiveness of the front of the building. So what we've ended up with is an incubator space for mom-and-pops that's less expensive than it will be for typical retail, certainly anywhere else in Falls Church. It'll give us the opportunity to expand our retail portfolio and merchandising mix in the building as a whole, and I think solves a great deal of the problems that we've talked about, including the articulation of the building. And I think that's about it. The rest of it, the food store, if I can touch on that briefly, we've had ongoing discussions with the food store, and since we've talked with most of you, we're getting very close to finalizing a letter of intent that will move us on to a lease document with the food store. The architects and I have a meeting tomorrow morning to go over fine-tuning the interior layout of the store, so we figure out where the lettuce is going to go and where the milk and bread's going to be, and all those kind of good things, which means we're way down the road on all this. What I'm asking for tonight is that we move on, that we try to get this moving through the process as quickly as we can, because once we commit to the food store, and once we have a commitment from them, the worst thing that can happen in my business is that we don't deliver the space that we've told them we're going to deliver, when we're going to deliver it. They've been very good at trying to slot into our schedule at this point, but what we need to do is move that schedule on now so that we can get our site plan approved, get our building permits approved, and go on from there. Richard, I know, will agree with me that we're going to do concurrent site plan processing to try and make that process as smooth as possible, to compress that timeframe as much as possible, but the bottom line is, I think we'd like to get this going, and we'd like your support. Simple as that. Anything else?
You want to go ahead?
Sure, we can go, I think, go to the one more slide, these are just some more views of the Maple Avenue, and then the next slide. What I'll just briefly do is talk to you how this relates to the, through how it relates to the site plan. My name is Stephanie Penkewitz, the landscape architect for the project, and appreciate the opportunity to be back here again. Last time, when we spoke to you, we talked about the quality and character of the streetscape, how we're integrating an urban art trail on Washington, and really trying to make it an integral part of the emerging arts district that, you know, this project is part of. We've been working with community members on the connection to Tanner Hill Park and other cultural assets of the community, so what I'm happy to answer questions about those elements, but they haven't really changed. What I'd like to do is just take you around the project. We've got enlargements of each area, so we can show you the sidewalk width and the tree planting, and how this building form has, how we've adjusted the streetscape. So if you start here at the corner of South Maple Avenue, directly across from Pearson Square and the entrance to the park, we now have, we still have on-street parking right at the park, and then we have a very generous wide sidewalk that between the building and the street tree, we have over 12 feet, and then to the curb, to the building face, or to the sidewalk area, and to the Portico Retail, where there's no tree, we have over 14 feet. So it's a very generous wide sidewalk, and we've really worked to maintain that all along South Maple. We're continuing the brick crosswalk across the entrance to the garage, so the pedestrian has a very continuous, pleasant experience crossing, very similar to what they did on Pearson Square entrance. And if you'll go to the next block, you continue to see the Portico Retail, and there potentially could be three or four shops here, depending on how the spaces, particularly the larger one, were divided up. In this area, we've carved out a few spots of on-street parking, so that if you can pop in quickly and pop out, you know, to grab the flower, you know, the flower pot or the scone from the bakery, and we have a very generous 10-foot wide sidewalk where you have on-street parking, or where you have a street tree, and it allows for these nooks for outdoor dining and cafe seating that could be related to the Portico Retail. At the corner, you have much larger, it's about 19 to 14 feet as it wraps around the corner, and then again, we're continuing the enhanced paving across the loading, grocery store loading entrance. Continuing along Tanner Hill Street, we transitioned to more of a granite or gray-toned streetscape, the other streetscape, we're using brick to match Pearson Square, but here, we would like to sort of tie it to the history of the side and Tanner Hill Park. We've preserved in place the arch as we had presented last time, and we have a few spaces of on-street parking on Tanner Hill, again, kind of pop in, you know, five, 10-minute grocery store shopping, pop out. And then the streetscape along Washington Street is nearly identical to what you saw last time, but we just wanted to demonstrate through this walk around the site that, you know, it's a very generous wide sidewalk, you have just over 14 feet here, and in some places, you have 16, depending on the relationship of the street tree to the building. And then continuing finally back to the park, where the restaurants and other commercial stores will be, we have a six-foot clear sidewalk right at the entrances to the restaurants, and then on the street level, because it's sort of two different zones, we have another 16 feet. And that brings you, you know, back through the wonderful park that we feel will be an incredible asset to the project, but I think that, you know, we now have the public realm animation, door fronts, storeways, activity happening continuously all around the project.
You might want to mention, Stephanie, go back one, please. Go back one more. You might want to mention that the grocery store is probably going to put outdoor displays of vegetables and fruits out in here, along with their seating for people to buy prepared foods, so this area's going to become somewhat activated. And go back one more, I just want to show the, this is the Maple Street entry to the grocery, so that people can come in here, go into these stairs and elevator, and then get into the grocery here. This is, the rest of this is retail use. Go back one more, please, I'm sorry. And this is the entry to our residential lobby, the rest of this would be Portico Retail. So just a few minor notes.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay, so we, since we worked last, we've been working on the architecture of the project and kind of updating it. One of the things that we've done, along with the Portico Retail, we've been manipulating this facade to have bay windows come in and out and push other elements in, so we've been manipulating these facades to be more interesting, get more interest on the street, and you can kind of see around the entry here, we've been doing the same. Let's go ahead more. Here we are, here's the grocery store entry, again, here's the Tanner Hill, here's looking down South Washington Street, and you can see we've been working on the architecture, kind of manipulating and getting more colors and ins and outs, and just developing it more. Here's the park again, down at the south end, looking up, South Washington. Here's the corner with the Portico Retail, this corner here, which would have some, could have outdoor seating, and then, of course, here's the grocery store front, which also could have some displays and seating out in here, again, the architecture. We're doing a major architectural element statement here on the corner. Do you want to talk about LEED, or you want me to?
Sure, just, we'll quickly highlight on the few notes about the project's sustainability. It is going to be a LEED-certified building. It's an existing, you know, light industrial site, so it will be cleaned up. We would love to reuse the local pink granite as part of the project, and all of the planting, including the rooftop gardens and streetscape and the park, are opportunities to really incorporate, you know, very wonderful sustainable elements, such as rain gardens and native plants. And we also believe it will be incredibly pedestrian-oriented, and you can walk from here to the new multimodal transportation spot that's being developed, it's going to have bike facilities and electric vehicle charging station, be very accessible from mass transit, and it's going to improve greatly on the existing condition that is there right now of all asphalt.
Back to county benefits, I think you, most of you've seen this before, but we're, I just want to highlight it one more time, on the Tanner Hill Heritage Celebration, we're committing to sidewalk treatments, kiosk and information desk that Stephanie had talked about, and some of the retail Portico, that we may end up using some of that as a display area for the foundation. The Gateway Park, which we've talked about quite a bit, payment of school capital cost per unit on a one-time basis. The undergrounding of utilities up Washington Street, yeah, Washington Street, and the traffic signal at Tanner Hill in South Washington, which will make it a lot more accessible to the bus to get to the metro, and also to get to the transportation area there. We have, are incorporating affordable housing units within our building, and we're, I guess, again, committing to a lease. One of the things we had talked about before is that you wanted to make sure that the property was actually leased, and we were committing to substantial retail, and so we have proposed a condition, a development condition, or an approval condition, that we'll have a signed lease from the grocery store prior to being allowed the special exception. And we, again, are looking to provide space for arts and culture within our property. And I've got, everybody's here, from the civil engineer, the traffic engineer, to the architect, to the retail guys, so if there are any questions or other things that come up, we're more than happy to answer them, but to stress again what Jack had said, we are kind of on a tight timeframe, and we've been working at this now for about a year and a quarter, and I think we've got our grocery store where we want them, and what's very important, when that lease gets signed, they usually have that date in there that says that we've got to deliver, and so we're really trying to push that along, and would hope that you guys would see the way to let us start the process through the city. So that's it.
All right. Why don't we start off with questions, staff? Do you have anything else to add? Wyatt?
Counsel, I would just note that in considering these special exception applications, we have the primary criteria, which really get to the financial drivers for the city, and the secondary criteria, which get to all of the community concerns that we would have with any redevelopment in the city. I like to think of it and explain it very often in the terms of a Venn diagram, where in order for a project to be able to proceed, it needs to satisfy the city's financial needs, it needs to meet the city's community and design needs, and it needs to be market feasible. And the developer believes this is market feasible, and so it's the council's task now to determine whether this meets the city's financial goals, and whether it satisfies the community needs that we have, from affordable housing, to excellence in design, to meeting some of the arts and cultural aspects that are part of this neighborhood. With respect to the finances of the project, in our prior staff report, we did have a summary of the net fiscal impact for the project. It is substantially positive. In addition to that, there are payments that will, and infrastructure improvements that will come about with this project. They're noted on this chart, and we will do our own staff review of those and provide those, a summary of those to the council in our staff report at the time that this moves forward. I would also just note that there are other aspects of infrastructure that aren't listed here. A project of this size does pay significant utility hookup fees, notably on the sewer side, where we have infrastructure needs, on the sanitary sewer side, and a project of this scale does represent a significant contribution to be able to meet those needs. And additionally, in terms of stormwater, we would, in the redevelopment of this site, which is currently paved without significant best management projects, we would move this project forward to meet our updated stormwater goals. The utility undergrounding is an objective for this part of the city. Our infrastructure on the sidewalks and on the streets in this part of the city have not seen the investment that other parts of the city had, have, and this project will allow us to begin to make those investments with the developer, and then set the stage for future redevelopment, commercial redevelopment up the core corridor heading north to Broad Street. So as we move forward with our staff report, we would do a comprehensive analysis of the primary and secondary criteria. We do think that in order to get the input on the secondary criteria in particular, we need the input from the Housing Commission, we need the input from the Architectural Advisory Board, we need the input from all of our boards and commissions, and the traditional way that we get that is for the council to serve as the gatekeeper, and then determine whether the project is sufficiently far enough advanced to be able to then be referred out, to get the input on all those other aspects. We are prepared, from a staff perspective, to be able to do our staff work for the City Council, for a target of a February 11 referral out to boards and commissions. I don't know that that decision will be made here at the council at work session tonight. If it is, we will act on it, but we would follow up with the council then to lay out the schedule for the community to know what the process will go forward, and for the developer to understand what the next steps in the process would be. Jim, are there any additional staff comments that you would make?
Well, you mentioned stormwater, and the park is an area which presently is in a city floodway, and the adding open space, which the city is short on, and adding an active, attractive park area as part of a gateway, does match up with our comprehensive plan, and we think a facility like that at the end of a building like this would provide a really terrific gateway for this part of town. So those things are not to be taken lightly, they're rare, and it's a nice opportunity here to have something of that quality as a potential for a gateway in a important part of the city. And also, the double plus of taking buildings out of what's presently a floodway in which, where there should not be buildings. So I think that's another plus that'll be looked at by the Planning Commission, Parks and Rec, and others.
And possibly have a positive impact on the city's community rating for flood insurance as well.
Thank you. Okay. Why don't we go ahead and get started with questions? I'll turn it over to the Planning Commission.
One of the things I'd like to comment on, was to follow up on Jim's comment on the floodway and the park there. I'd like to make sure that this isn't a standalone park, that it could, eventually, we're going to get that, those other properties down there to develop or do something with, and it would be nice to be able to merge any park in with whatever we're doing on the other projects, so, you know, not a big eight-foot wall between the two projects. And I'm also interested in how, you mentioned moving ahead with the SE and the site plan at the same time. This particular timeline doesn't say that, it says site plan afterwards. Whichever way we do it, if we do go along, as we have talked in the past about doing site plan along with SE, I'd like to get some further details on exactly how we're going to do that. I mean, this is something that we've not done before, so it's going to take a little bit of discussing the process and developing it. So although we'd like to help you move along as quickly as possible, we do have to work out a couple kinks.
I think what we've tried to do here is show that how it could follow a month behind the SE, which will go to the Planning Commission and City Council, only the site plan is approved by Planning Commission. So as they refine the design, keep refining the design for the SE, those should be reflected on your site plan drawings as they evolve, so it may not be exactly concurrent, but be very close behind. We're not looking at months or six months away there. I'm assuming you all can fill this in, that you'd be working to finalize design as you go, in tandem with the SE discussion.
Okay.
But I think having maybe a month after the SE for refinements on the site plan itself would not be a bad thing.
Thank you.
It was my understanding, too, that the city wanted to, with the site plan being approved, it basically nails everything down in the same process, so there's nothing to question at that point.
In the past, we've had some situations where the site plan hasn't come in for, you know, months or years later, so this would not be the case.
Right. Andy?
Along that same line, Jim, if we could maybe get a kind of timeline scenario so that we could have a better idea of how this might go, because I'm having a difficult time forming it in my head.
Yeah, we have a tentative outline on the second page.
Right, on the back, yeah.
Again, we'll have to fill in dates, it will depend on whether it goes forward to a first reading and so forth, but we can plug in those dates and backup dates as needed.
A couple of comments about your presentation. I really am impressed with the detailing of the architectural features along South Maple. That was really, really, and I'm looking forward to seeing what will happen with the other facades, because that was very, very interesting, and the smaller balconies up above and everything, it was just, the detailing was quite, quite nice. And then I also wanted to say that if any of you get a chance to go to the Fresh Market over in Vienna, it's really an awesome store. I think Ruth went, I think Melissa went, and it's fantastic, it would be wonderful, wonderful, having it here in the city. And I could see a lot of active outside dining situations with the food store itself, and because of the products that they have inside, and it's a very, very attractive and comprehensive store. Very impressive.
Anybody else up there?
You guys had mentioned about this cavernous effect. How does the height of this building compare to the Pearson? Do you know the differential?
It goes from, Pearson's, I think it's like between 75, Bear's, I think it's maxed out at 75 feet, and our building maxes out.
About 84 feet, yeah. But it's not, that's at one point, and it goes down to about 75 feet at the other end of the building. It steps down the hill. Do we have a, I guess, can you go back to one of the 3D models, or the sketches, yeah? You can see here, this is South Maple, this is the highest portion here, this is roughly about 84 feet, this is about 75 feet, so we're stepping down the hill in order to minimize that, that height as much as possible. And they're consistently around, I don't know, around 70 to 75 feet. They also step down the hill, this is, this is the same. Go to a couple, go to the next, maybe there's another, that doesn't show much of the Pearson, it's kind of hidden by our building, go to the next one. There's kind of the Pearson, here's our building, we're a little bit higher. And some of these elements like this, there's really nothing up here, it's just architectural elements, higher elements, which will be kind of like, I guess, the equivalent of a church steeple, you know, they are there to create more interest in the architecture, but there's really nothing up there, it's just parapet. So that's kind of where we're at.
And is the parking all underground, or is there a bunch of parking on the first level?
It's all underground or in the building. If you could go to the plan, Katie. Let's go to the lowest plan real quick, Katie.
Right.
Well, here's the first floor, this is the neighborhood grocery, this is their parking kind of at the same level, but this is all inside the building and hidden. Boy, this is the commercial retail space at the other end, and this is actually stepped down a whole floor, this is actually mezzanine, this is stepped down a whole floor, because we are stepping right here, the entire building steps down 12 feet. Go to the next plan in sequence. Oh, I'm sorry, go back the other way. Yeah, here we are, this is underground parking, this is about 10 to 12 feet underground, this is at grade, this is the ground floor. Again, there's a 12 foot, there's a step here from the floor above, go to the next one, Katie. Oh, sorry, go next, back, keep going down. But as we go, we have two other levels underground, so, you know, the vast majority of the parking is underground.
All of it is covered.
Yeah, all covered, underground, hidden away, except for, of course, the on-street park.
Are there any, is there going to be any requests for waivers on this parking, or that meets the current code, or modified?
There's a request for a parking reduction, yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
What's the Portico Retail, what's the sort of approximate gross square footage?
The total? Each one is between 300 to, up to, I think, 700 square feet.
The total gross is about 960, 960 to 1,000.
960, so I was not here for the last work session, I would just say, and I know that the process, through the benefit of technology, I was able to watch this on Granicus, which was kind of a miracle, but I didn't get sort of the nuance of that discussion, but I know that everybody got sort of very excited about Maple Avenue, and I would just say that the normal process that we used to have where stuff went to the Planning Commission and didn't go through the EDC, my focus from a Planning Commission standpoint would have been much more on South Washington. We had a North Washington streetscape study, I'm much more interested on what's happening on what I think is our high street, and that is South Washington, much less on Maple, so I think that, from an architectural standpoint, I think this looks great, it's a tremendous project, I look forward to seeing it.
All right, why don't we go down the line for the council members? Why don't we start at the far end with Dave? All right. Why don't we go down the line for council members? Why don't we start at the far end with Dave?
Excellent. I wonder if city staff could review the finances here, percentage of residential versus commercial assumptions. I'm particularly sensitive to this because a week ago, we had a joint session with the school board, and their facility needs are somewhere upwards of $130 million over the next few years. So I'm particularly interested in knowing what the revenue generation is versus the potential risk of additional school costs and overcrowding in the schools.
Let me ask Rick Goff to summarize the fiscal impact numbers.
Based on the makeup of the project as we now know it, and it is subject to some change, there could be different square footages of retail versus restaurant versus other uses on the ground floor. But based on the assumptions we have, what we've come up with, with our fiscal impact model, is a gross annual revenue of about $1.4 million a year and a net annual revenue of $626,000 a year. The assumption that we used for pupils in the building was based on our experience with other mixed-use projects and the mix of bedroom units for the residential units in the building, and the number of pupils that we estimate is 26 for the project. And 26 pupils represents costs for the project that probably amount to, based on our model, 400, about $450,000 a year.
Let me follow up. What was the assumption for tax generation in the commercial areas? Did you make certain assumptions about occupancies?
Do you mean percentage of commercial in the project?
What is the percentage of, since we're on that, what is the percentage of commercial versus residential?
It's 17%.
All right. And then...
The breakdown of retail versus restaurant, was that the question?
Yeah. You made a certain assumption about gross revenue generation. So what were you assuming would be in these various spaces? Because the only one that I see any relative certainty at all for is a grocery store, so...
Right. We assumed 21,600 square feet of grocery, 4,600 square feet of restaurant, about 4,000 square feet of retail, and 10,500 square feet of generic office. Now, that is an area, we made an assumption at the park end of the building, if you will, not knowing what the precise use of that space would be. We used office as the basis for our assumption.
Okay. Let me ask to the developer, do you have any commitments for restaurant or retail or office here?
No, sir. We have interests, but we don't have commitments. We, it's, in the grocery business, you're planning two and three and four years out. In the restaurant business, you're planning 12 months out. So I would anticipate, we've just, we've just launched this, this week, our Clarendon project that my firm is leasing for Elm Street Development, and that is still a hole in the ground, but it's, they're starting vertical construction. And we're at least probably 18 months away from delivery of that. And we've started, we've just started this, this month, marketing to restaurants and small shop users. And that's, that's pretty typical.
Okay. And how many acres do we have involved in this project?
About 2.19 acres of it.
Okay. Is this just questions at this point? I'll save my comments for later.
Or comments as well?
Well, I, as I'm looking at this, it's somewhat unspectacular in terms of its net revenue generation. So I'll be interested in, in all of that as the project unfolds. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I would like to commend the developer and their architect, Mr. Drake, for, I think, a very interesting development with respect to this retail. I think it is certainly a step in the right direction. I would, to the extent you're able to expand, and I would certainly think that's, would be good, particularly the area where the lobby is, where I think it could be deeper into the building and reduce your lobby a bit. Let me think of what else I had. With respect to Levine School of Music, we didn't hear anything about that. Could you guys comment on where that is?
We have a meeting, we've been focused frankly on the, on the food store because it's so important to the project, and we're trying to get that to a point of certainty before we have any meaningful discussions with Levine. We do have a, I have got a meeting set up with them, I believe on the 29th of this month, to review very basics, their requirements for the space, their financial capabilities, their thoughts with respect to rent, how much it's going to cost to build up the space. And we'll start those discussions.
Okay. Okay. I wonder if maybe, Mr. Drake, you could take us through some of the architectural we saw, but in terms of the materials, for example, is it masonry? Is it, what are the exterior materials?
Yeah, let's go back. Let's go back, let's go back to the perspective sketches. I think those are probably... Go back one more. Okay. So here we are. Here we are with stone or aeroscrap, which is a stone-like product. This is masonry. This is, this is probably cementitious or metal panels. Of course, a lot of glazing. Here we have a lot of storefront. This will be, this will end up being signage in here. Again, signage could also be in here. We have some awnings. So it's pretty, it's pretty, it's pretty high-quality materials. I mean, it's, it's a pretty high-quality material project.
Is that it? The whole way around, wrapping it all up?
Yeah, I mean, we can go look at some others, but it's pretty, again, here are, here are, here's the stoner aeroscrap. Here's masonry. These are some bay windows with the masonry or panel on them. You know, here are, here are some areas. We might have some paneling. And, you know, generally, paneling up with high masonry here. Kind of a, we're kind of looking at a top, middle, base architecture, but also not being so rigorous that we have some areas where we have vertical elements at the corners every so often. So we're kind of breaking up that massing and trying to create some interest. As I said earlier, we're trying to, especially on the Maple side, we're trying to create some interest by these bay windows and these elements that push in, these elements that push out, to kind of get, get some in-and-outs going on, especially on South Maple. But as we develop the architecture, we're going to probably look at all the sides. Keep, go to the next one. Here at the end of the, here at the end of the building, you're starting to see as it wraps around the corner, going around the park. Again, you're seeing some elements that, that come up and will step back as we go around the corners. You know, I would say that's, it's predominantly a masonry building with metal paneling or cementitious panelings as a secondary element. And of course, huge amount of glass. Glass, frankly, is probably 30 to 35%, maybe even 40% of this exterior facade.
This is a comment kind of for staff, and it's something we've discussed before, but I would recommend, if we can, using tree grates as opposed to having the same kind of raised planters that we've got in other places, which take up a decent amount of available sidewalk. So that's something I, you may have heard before, but I would just make that comment again. Yeah, I think that's all I've got, at least for now, if I could. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions, and then I'll go through some comments as well. On the sidewalk widths on Maple, what is the narrowest section where there's a tree pit and also the Portico retail?
So, like, this dimension is 12 and 1/2 feet, 13.4, 14.1, again, 12 and 1/2. And then maybe, Katie, go to this one. Here you have 13, 8, and 13. So I believe, sorry.
So probably 10 feet is the narrowest section of clear sidewalk width?
I'm sorry. That was 13.8. So, yeah, 10 is the narrowest.
10 is the narrowest, clearest section. Okay. Thank you. I think the Portico retail is a really innovative idea. And I think it addresses some of the concerns that we had heard before on South Maple Street. I just want to make sure that that works from a leasing standpoint. So I'd like to find out a little bit more information about it. I think it's a fairly new concept for the city, at least. You know, if it, if it looks like there's some problems with it, I'd want to come back to revisiting the concept. What I don't want is empty spaces there for years. I think that, that's going to be more damaging to that area of the city and to the project as well. So I know that you have an incentive to also fill that retail space. But I have a hard time envisioning, other than very basic services of what could go there. Certainly could...
Let me get you some examples, Mr. Mayor. And I'll also contact some of my fellow developers, especially in DC, and ask them, because there's, there's a lot of different examples of it there. I'll take some pictures and we'll figure out some of the leasing strategies for it.
Great. And I would be looking, I want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples. So it's the depth that, you know, I can sort of see what could go in there. I just don't, I want to make sure that it's, you know, workable. And I think you all are in the best position to do that. Then, some of the other comments that I had is I just wanted to echo Vice Mayor Snyder's comments regarding the net gross and the commercial residential mix. I think that's an area that could still be improved upon to get the, the net a little bit higher to the city. So I'd be interested in hearing more about that as well and what can be done. And I think the, one of the most important aspects of the project certainly is the grocery store. And it sounds like you all are progressing with Plan A, and Plan B is not on, not being followed right now, which I, which I think is a, you know, certainly a viable path forward. I think one option, again, before, you know, final approvals, even if it's administrative, there needs to be a signed lease. And I would even take it a step further. And one thing we can also think about, you know, and the lawyers would have to work out the languages, tying the grocery store to building permits, for example, may be another way of addressing it. But what I'm driving at is, there would have to be a grocery store at some point. Or, or, or commercial retail that happens before the building gets built and permits are issued. You know, it, maybe, I think that's a viability issue for you all as well and make the pro formas work. But again, you know, we don't have insight to your pro formas, nor necessarily should we. But it's, it's a key aspect of this project. So that's going to have to get ironed out in relatively short order. So those are, those are the comments that I have. But main issues are the net impact and the residential, commercial mix, which I think needs to be improved upon a little bit.
You've answered my one question about the underground utilities, which I appreciate. And I presume that in, I don't know if this is where the mayor was going in this question, but I presume that sidewalks are ADA compliant and we're EPA compliant in terms of what we do with the fill dirt. We've had this conversation, you know, okay, given, given the current use of the site. I was, I was struck by the discussion about the major architectural element. I am particularly sensitive to that, given some of the plans that are, that are currently being considered in my part of town. And some of the major architectural elements include large, lighted spaces, which impact the neighbors across the street and the neighbors around. So I'm just, I was, I was wondering, I can't remember which slide it was that showed a sort of a large vertical, it looked like a large vertical window, and I didn't know if that was going to be shining into everybody's...
Residential units, though. I mean, let's go back.
Okay, there's nothing that's going to be across the street that it's going to be...
Well, these, these are in a unit. These, so this is someone's living room.
Okay, all right.
And so this is not like a, you know, and it's not like a, I don't know what you'd call it, an office building type of thing. But these are, these are all units. These are all living rooms, bedrooms, et cetera, et cetera. So as you know, during the nighttime, half of these might be on, half of these might be off.
Okay. I just, when I, when I heard architectural element, I thought it was a, a structure that was, that was not necess... Yeah, not necessarily tied to the function of the building.
No, no. I mean, it's an architectural statement in terms of, in terms of the elevation.
I see. I see. Okay. All right. Thank you. That's, that's, thank you very much. And just making sure, and then, and this is, I'm sure I should know the answer to this question, but who is, once the building is built, who is responsible for the maintenance of the streetscape? Is that the city? Or...
That's something we need to discuss with the developer, and we have had some initial discussions. We would, we have typically taken the streetscape after it's constructed, and the city maintains it going forward. And we'd like to have the discussion with the developer about a different arrangement, particularly for the park area, but also for the streetscape.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
Just to comment to Rob on the EDC and the planning commission. The planning commissioners have come in every meeting to the EDC, so it's not like people have been excluded. In fact, I think Melissa went on an almost regular basis to the EDC meetings, and planning commissioners have been welcomed. So it's not that it's usurping in any way the role of the planning commission. As to the discussion on South Maple versus South Washington, it's a long, been a long discussion, as long as I've been chair of the EDC. It's been pretty contentious. I wouldn't say it was at cage-wrestling intensity, but it's, it's been pretty, pretty intense and been a long discussion, I'm sure. Dave Tarter and others can talk to you about the discussions we've had on that issue. As regards the plan, I think it's in good shape. Not surprising, I'm not in complete conformance with some of the other comments that have been made here. I'm a little less concerned about the exact number of residential units. I look at it more in the issue of overall, the structure of the city's revenues and expenses. And it doesn't move the needle even a millimeter, whether it's 220 or 210 or whatever, something like that. Just doesn't have any impact at all in the city's financial arrangements, financial well-being. So if we can get a good, solid, positive net fiscal impact... And the other thing I would like to indicate is that, is my understanding from the school board, that most of the increases in enrollment take place from infill within the city and that it's not specifically related to these types of projects. So I don't want to get over-focused on that issue. So I'm pretty impressed with the project, and I'm less concerned about squeezing the last unit out of the building or the last 50 feet of retail, if it's going to make it more difficult. As to the architectural design and accessories, I would like to hear the views of the planning commission, because I think that's your role, to really speak to those types of things. I have my views, but I'd like, you know, I'd like to hear from you guys on what you think makes the most sense. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. I agree with the chair of the EDC, Mr. Kalin. If the question before us tonight is, is the project sufficiently far enough advanced for council to make referral to boards and commissions, my answer is yes.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Anything else by council members?
Okay, and then we can talk about process in a second and gauge where everybody is. I did just want to, as far as the unit count, it's, it's something that I think has been outstanding on at least some council members' mind is we're seeing redevelopment interest in the city. So I think there was a notion of trying to determine how many residential units the city could absorb so we can do further planning. I think, Mr. Kalin, this gets to your point. You know, 10 units here, 20 units there, may not dramatically move the needle, but at some point, the needle does get moved, and the issue is at what point? And I know that we're talking to various developers about the need to increase the commercial mixture in the city. So I do think it's an important point that we need to discuss. While certainly we are getting increases in school populations from our residential infill, we have very little say on that. These projects, again, are on primarily, or all of them are on, commercial properties that are being utilized... all of them are on, commercial properties that are being utilized for significant residential use. So I think that, that's an important thing to keep, keep in mind. Again, I think this project is looking very good, it's in the right direction, but if there's a way without toppling the project, if you will, of looking at the residential count, I think that's, that's important, at least to some council members. So I, and I don't want to belabor that point back and forth tonight, because it is a philosophical issue. The other thing that I just wanted to ask, that the planning commissioners also take a look at, is the, is the canyon effect that was discussed on South Maple. Again, we don't need to get into it tonight, but I think it's important to take a look at both sides of the street. We haven't seen that in the drawings, but articulations, et cetera, I think will help. But I leave that up to our planning commissioners and staff to make sure that's, that's working right. So, and I say that in part because I believe that the sidewalks, or I'm sorry, the right away on the street is a bit narrower.
We've narrowed it.
Yeah, so it's, it's a little bit narrower, so that may have an effect on, on what that street looks like. So, Mr. Kalin, I know you're, you're jumping at the bit on this, but again, I don't want to debate this point tonight.
I, I just want to make another comment.
Go ahead.
We have to be alive to the number of residential units, but I think it's more an issue of the number of projects that we undertake, the ones that each one has 200 or 300 units. That's definitely a major consideration. Once we think we go, we've gone to the stage, I'm just making the point that a few here and a few there on a couple of projects isn't going to move the needle. But if we do too many projects, that's where your point really gets to, to hit home. And that's the issue that one I think should be concerned with.
Granted. Yep. And I, and I think right now, the, the concern where I'm coming from right now is we've got several projects, one that's in the ground and being built, one that could be upcoming, and another one that's very early in the process. So we're, we're looking at a substantial number of units. So 10 units here or there makes one additional project. So I, I don't think we can discount that, you know, even a small number here or there can add up quickly, if we're talking about five projects and just say roughly 20, 20 units each, that.
But we're not going to discuss that.
But, but, no, but I, but I think it's an important point that, that needs to be heard, and it's been raised by several council members at this point. All right. Anything else by the planning commissioners before we briefly talk about process? Ruth?
No, thank you. We'll, we'll be looking forward to commenting on the architectural details once we have our first work session.
And so will the architectural advisory.
Oh, yeah.
All right. So for council members, are folks feeling like, I know that we've heard from two council members, that this is at least ready to go to first reading?
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not going to deal with the residential unit side of the ledger, I think that's already been talked about, but I'm really concerned about the commercial side. We, we've made progress on the grocery store, but the rest of it's empty space at this point. And there were certain assumptions made about a positive net revenue, which again, I would like to see more, but I don't even see good, solid numbers that we can bank on. So before I, I would vote to move this project, I want these other things nailed down as much as we possibly can. Otherwise, we're dealing with a huge question mark when it comes to commercial. We've got open spaces, only one thing nailed down, which is good, appreciate the, the progress on the grocery store. But if we're going to approve a project because of its net commercial value, and we don't know what that is, and those spaces, we know from experience, spaces sometimes have stayed vacant four or five years or longer. So that doesn't mean, so what that does is it undercuts your economic analysis for the project. So before this project is ready to go, in my opinion, if we're going to approve it based on certain assumptions, I would like those assumptions nailed down to the greatest extent possible.
And just, if I may, there's a couple ways of dealing with that, that I think we should throw out as examples. One is to tie those other larger commercial spaces to approvals of building permits or demolition permits. We can work on the timing of that, but there may be ways of tackling those concerns. Or also bonding provisions, if it's not leased out within a certain space, to create some incentives, so we don't have the empty retail. And just so the applicant's aware of where some of these concerns are coming from, we do have throughout the city, projects that were promised to be, you know, active first-floor retail, but what we quickly learned is that those were essentially not huge moneymakers for the developers. So as long as the residential got filled, they were still meeting their profit margins, and not much incentive to fill the, the retail. Vice Mayor Snyder, is that what you were trying to get at? Do those possibilities, ways of addressing your concerns address what you're trying to get at?
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
Okay. And I know that we've got Mr. Foster in the room. So, Mr. Foster, if you can work with the applicant's attorneys on ways of handling that, similar to the ways that we're envisioning the grocery store, but expanding that out, or maybe slightly differently, given the timing of build-out for the grocery store on the other spaces. All right. Anything else? So it sounds like the couple issues that, that need to get addressed with just a market, marketing strategy as well, for the porcos, or how those would work, at least examples. All right. Okay. And has staff formally commented on this latest version?
I think we're very pleased with how it's moving along. As the manager said, we've been in conversation and provided input, and there's been good response to that, and actually additional improvements as we've gone through. So we think it's, it's moving in the correct direction. And the goals that we've been hearing about, trying to make all sides of the building pedestrian oriented and attractive, I think this goes a long way to doing that. We're also pleased with the notion of some retail or spaces that could be offered at a lesser rent, and the notion of being able to have some space that might be attractive to non-chain, non, you know, big business type of spaces. Those frankly are, those are rare, and I think that's, that's a, be a very positive aspect of this plan, to have some of those spaces available. So we're pleased with how it's moved along.
Thank you. All right. So for now, let's put it on February 11th for first reading. And I just want to make sure the developer knows sort of what the process is in the city. Is that, have you all had a chance to talk to staff about that? I, I just want to make sure expectations are managed, because this is the first time other boards and commissions are going to have an opportunity to look at it. So there's going to be further comments, further refinements that are made between first and second reading. So, and, and I think that's just the way that the process works. And you've heard some of our comments be, you know, by council members and planning commissioners at this point, that, that need to get addressed before first reading. All right. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Should we take a quick five minutes?
All right.
Yeah, Chris is going to draft a little bit of our press on the guy, you know, based on our feedback, do something.
Thank you guys back. This stuff's.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
All right.
Yes, yes, okay.
Congratulations, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks for your kind of listening.
I can live in the protectorate.
Oh, sorry.
Oh.
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 Oh, I see the.
Oh.
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 All right. Why don't we get, get going? So Wyatt, if you want to lead this off, and then we'll turn it over to Connie.
Okay, great. We are joined by several members of our retirement board. Captain Rick Campbell, who is an employee member of the board, and our Chair, Connie Reidberg, who is a citizen of the city and has led our retirement board, very ably, and is the author of the report that's before the City Council. Richard Parker serves as our staff support for the board. Ira Kalin is the council liaison to the board, and very active. I just want to note that with the numbers that we will discuss tonight, an increase of the actuarially required contribution to the pension fund of 3.7 million, that that number is a, pretty close to what our forecast was a year ago. And these numbers are built into the fiscal models and the financial projections that we've been discussing, you know, at the November 28th meeting of the City Council. So there's no surprises there. What tonight is, is really about is what's behind the numbers, what it all means, and maybe even where it's going. So I'll turn it over to our chairman.
Thank you. Again, I'm Connie Reidberg, and I'm the Citizen Chair of the Retirement Board. As way of background, I am a pension actuary with about 20 years of experience. So I do this kind of work and this kind of analysis for large corporations in my day job. So we have in front of you, you have two documents. The first one that I wanted to go over says FY14 contributions for the city pension plan. Yes, that one. As Wyatt mentioned, at the top, we've got some information about the contributions. Now, this is for the basic plan that covers the city employees. It's also for the police plan that covers the police officers. So that's the group that we're talking about, their pension benefits. So in the, in the, the table here, we're showing that the fiscal 14 contributions, 2.9 million for the basic plan, about 0.8 million for the police, for a total of 3.7 million. That's an increase from 3.2 for this fiscal year, but as Wyatt said, that was anticipated. We anticipated this time last year that we'd be at about 3.6. So we're in line with that, and consistent with, you know, the stock market not being as strong during this last 12 months as, as perhaps it has been in the past, and as we would expect long-term. On the right side, those tables, talking about the funded status, at the end of July 2, excuse me, July 1st, 2011, the plans in total were about 93% funded. That was about 6 million of unfunded liability. As of July 1, 2012, we're at about 89% funded. So we dropped a little bit, largely again due to our return on assets for the July 1, 2011 through July, July 1, 2012, was 0.7% versus our long-term assumption of 7.5. We don't expect 7.5 every year, but 0.7, or that's our long-term assumption. Any questions on that part of the table?
Question.
Okay. We've listed here at the bottom of this first page, factors impacting the results. Talked a little bit about the market value of assets. We have some other comments here about pay increases, the continuing freeze of the employee pay through the end of, or July 1st, 2012, kept the liabilities down. Now that we'll have, I think of what I remember reading in the, is the 5.5% increase at July 1, 2012. That will impact our fiscal 15 contributions, so we'll talk a little bit about that. And then we had some benefit changes that we approved about a year ago, and that's included in some of the forecasts, had just a small impact on these numbers here. Onto the second page. Here we have projected contributions. So we show the 3.7 million for fiscal 14. That increases up to 4 million for FY15. The reason for that is we are still recognizing some of the asset losses that occurred in 2008. Those are still being brought into the contribution calculation. And then as we pay those off, the contributions come up with some ups and downs for the various asset returns. So those are the projection, projected contributions, a little bit higher than we had last year. This time, again, because of the asset losses, there's also some conservatism that, excuse me, there were some plan changes that were reflected in our projections last time that are not reflected this time. So, you know, I, I do want to say to the council, these are the contributions that the plan actuary has put in front of us. There are several factors that the plan actuary has not taken into account just yet. So when you look at these numbers, there are several things coming up that are not reflected here. Three of them will increase the cost, two of them will decrease the cost. So mention the one-time pay increase that happened July 1st. That will increase the cost, because our long-term assumption is 4.5%. We're seeing evidence that people are living longer than we previously assumed, so that will increase costs, as we have to assume we make more payments to people. The biggest one, though, is as we look out to long-term return on assets, I think the outlook on the markets are coming down a bit, and a return on asset long-term of 7.5% may not be something that we can continue to assume. I think we're seeing more movement closer to 7, and so that's something that we may have to consider. There are some other things, as I mentioned, that could decrease the cost. Some of the plan changes that went into effect will slowly decrease the cost as people come in at a lower benefit level. And then if the employees, employment ends for employees impacted by the sale of the water system, if that happens, that will slightly decrease costs. Net, however, doing some back-of-the-envelope calculations, not by the plan actuaries, but just by me, suggests that the cost could be as much as $1 million higher each year. So take these contributions, but I think as we think about long-term budgeting, need to keep that in mind. And it's probably something we want to ask the plans actuary to do a little bit better, more robust projections, as we think about what the costs of these plans are going to be going forward.
Okay. Questions? Ira?
This, of course, assumes in way they've done, because under Gatsby, still, I think, for municipalities, the rate of return on your assets is also your liability discount rate, correct?
That's right.
Which, let me put it understated, it's sort of, for me, a grotesque underestimation of pension costs. See if you can get a 7% CD. Okay? How about like, you know?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
1%?
A CD or a safe.
About 1%?
So that's what this basically assumes. And that side of the calculation is extraordinarily sensitive to a 1% change in the discount rate can move your, your unfunded or funded ratios by 12, 15%. So it's actually more important in terms of its financial impact than the market rate. But under Gatsby, the two are the same, so you change one, you sort of change the other. But it's not, we listen, eventually. But it's not, we listen, eventually, GASB will get around to doing what the private sector does, it's usually what, a 4, 5 year model. And in the private sector, they're now recognizing discount rates of 2, 3, maybe 4%.
4%.
And that's about it.
Yep.
And that's, and that's going to move these numbers in a tremendous, tremendous way. When you're finished, I'd like to talk with, you know, sort of have a process so we can all discuss the issue of how we could de-risk the portfolio. I think you've mentioned, when you get to that, let's take a second.
Okay. Any other questions on?
Anything else by council members before we go on?
I have a question too. I don't know if this is the right time. Is, are we going to have a, kind of a full presentation and ask questions, or?
Well, on this section, I think we are going to talk about how do we reduce the risks moving forward and options as we move forward. So I think that's going to happen at the end of the presentation.
Right.
I mean, there's some general questions, I don't know what you'd want to, or later.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, they're, they're pretty stupid, so just indulge me if you could. First off, let me try to understand the problem, because I'm not sure I do. I understand that the pensions aren't fully funded, I'm not sure I understand why. In other words, because of the financial meltdown five years ago, people just stopped making the required contributions, is that what happened?
Just taking a mo, moment to think about how to best explain this. The way the rules work right now is when you have an unfunded liability, well, we have two parts to the, the amount that we contribute. One, just to kind of keep us up with things, we, we make a contribution equal to what people have earned, the value of what they earned that year. Then we look at, how much are we unfunded? And we spread that over 15 years. So the reason we're not funded, fully funded, we had the meltdown in 2008. Now we're spreading some of that over 15 years. There are some other intricacies about how we look at assets, so even some of the asset losses in 2008 aren't flowing through until now, but the rules allow us to get up to fully funded over time. The reason for doing that is if, you know, we had a big market downturn in 2008, let's say we lost 10, 15 million in asset values, this is a long-term plan, this is a long-term liability. To ask the city to come up with the $15 million in one year would be difficult for any city. So the rules allow us to spread it over time.
Basically, we got hit hard five years ago, and we're trying to figure out when we're going to make ourselves whole within that 15-year period?
We are working towards making ourselves whole over a 15-year period.
And we get another eight or so years to do it, or something like that?
Yes, keeping in mind that as time goes, like, we had the loss this past year on our asset return, 7.5 versus 0.7. The year before, that was 30, the opposite, I think we had around 14, 15% return, whereas we, 25%? Thank you. So each year, we have these pieces moving.
I understand. It's a moving, it moves a little bit every year, and so it goes up, goes down, depending on how the markets do.
That's right.
And so we have, our plan is the defined benefit plan, is that what it is?
That's correct.
And there's no movement towards defined contributions, is that right?
We had a discussion, I want to say, year and a half ago? We looked at, should we be moving towards defined contribution? We had various discussions with employees about what they wanted. Were they willing to pay more to keep the DB plan? And also the economic efficiencies of having a DB plan for some employees and a DC plan for others. Based on all of those factors, we decided we would keep the DB plan.
We being the city council?
We being the city council.
Okay.
Upon the, with the recommendation of the retirement board.
Okay. I don't want to monopolize, I just didn't understand everything.
Thank you. Connie?
As I look through the appendix, I'm just going to give people a minute to, to take a look. I wasn't going to go over any of the information explicitly unless someone wanted me to cover something.
Okay?
Okay.
Any, any other questions before we talk about options as, as we look at the plan?
Do you want to cover this other document, which I think will help some of the discussion around?
Ah, yes. Thank you.
If that's okay? Okay, so the other document says regarding GASB changes relating to the pension plan Before I go into what we have here, I just want to say, this is our best understanding of the new rules, of the new GASB rules related to pension plans. Some of the implementation rules about how this is actually going to work have not come out yet, so again, this is our best understanding of what we have learned to date. So here are some of the changes that are going to happen because of these new rules under GASB regarding pension plans. The first item is the balance sheet. So right now, for the city's balance sheet, we record a liability for the pension plan of zero. The reason we record a liability for the pension plan of zero is because every year, the actuary comes up with a contribution amount, and every year, the city pays that contribution amount. The plan's still unfunded, but we don't have a liability on the balance sheet for the plan. That's, that's going to change. Going forward, the unfunded liability, using the discount rate of 7.5 or whatever discount rate we, we have as our long-term return on assets, that unfunded liability is going to go to the balance sheet. Right now, that would be $10 million. You know, as a point of reference, July 1, 2010, that unfunded liability was $20 million. That is going to be on top of the unfunded liability the city will be recording for the VRS plan, which was estimated at 39 million. So taking both the 10 million for this plan and the 39 million for the VRS, that comes up to a minus 49 million on your balance sheet.
I guess just to add to May, when, when you say it shows up in the balance sheet, it, it would be a deduction against our net assets. So, and it would also be whatever portion of the school division would be recorded in the school division's net assets, which would be a large negative number, and the 10 million would be recorded against our net assets on the city side, which would still leave the city side technically above zero, but would mean that the schools would show a huge, a huge negative net asset.
So why that's important, if you look at borrowing, our rating agencies previously, they didn't have really any information about the, the plans, other than, okay, you've made the contributions that you've been required to make, but they didn't have any other information. Now there'll be more information on that, on your balance sheet, letting ratings, rating agencies know, this is what you have as a liability, you know, could impact your borrowing cost.
Or access the capital markets, depending on who you are to.
Exactly. So now getting to what could we do about some of these issues? We could about, help me out, 70% of our assets are in equities, that's very typical for a pension plan. We could move to something into more, if you will, less risky assets, more bonds, other assets that don't have as much volatility. The offsetting factor there is, you know, you earn less. If you earn less, you've got to contribute more because it's the same benefits that you're, you're funding. But it does give you less volatility. Other strategies about essentially transferring the liability to others, such as if you buy an annuity from an insurance company, you can say, rather than the city's pension plan paying the benefits, you could ask an insurance company to, to do that and transfer the amount of money. Insurance companies need to make a profit, there's risks that they will put into the, the cost that they will charge the city, so, you know, that comes with a cost. You could consider paying people out as lump sums, transfer the risk to the employees when they, when they leave. Again, there are costs there because you will have to pay out employees at a lower interest rate than we think, or return on asset assumption that we think the city can earn long-term. So not surprising, there's no magic bullet here about how to reduce, reduce the risk. There are certain things, I think, we as the retirement board will be exploring around, as we hope the plan continues to get better funded, and if, you know, asset returns do well this year, perhaps we'll be looking at a better funded position, could we immunize a part of the plan? So that we've got the, reducing some of the risk of that plan, but it does require us to get to a good funded status position, and it's still moving into less risky assets, so it's still at a cost. There is a cost of reducing the risk.
Maybe?
Yeah, Ira, go ahead.
There, there is actually, which is absolutely true, there are some new ideas that have been coming out, which I'm actually exploring, which would be to let the market do the work for you. We are very well-funded compared to many other pension plans. So let's say, as we once say, let's say you keep them both the same, but you say, we only think equities will grow 5.5, you know, aren't really growth, but that means the discount rate drops. And that would make us probably overfunding. And the overfunding, if you have a series of triggers, you can take money off the table rather than leave it overfunded. That excess by, you know, annuities, but you can't do it all at one time, you have to have a plan and set of triggers that will allow you a glide path so that you can de-risk your portfolio without the city spending a lot of money. You sort of let the market work for you. Now, there is some hedge going into that right now, the rates could go down again, so you have to be able to protect against that. That may be something, if even we're strong, we may not want to look into, but the idea is to repeat, to let the market earn you the money, to buy the types of annuities and bonds that are too expensive per se, when you get to an overfunding level. Rather than saying, let's cut out the payments to the pension fund, don't, per se, what you do is the under, the overfunding allows you to reduce that volatility, and then you don't get this problem of 25% one year, 0.7% the next year. That volatility is very hard for sponsors to manage. This is one of the reasons why many firms, particularly the private sector, are looking for ways of making those, that volatility far less without spending a lot of money. Something I would like to recommend, so, look into when we have a chance, you know, going forward, because I think rates will be building down. Hope the old absolute interest rates will be.
Bond, bond rates and annuity rates?
Everything.
Okay. I, I think there, I think there's a lot of merit, yeah, I, I think there's a lot of merit to those ideas. I think we have to be careful about the difference between corporate plans and public plans.
It's the ongoing structure.
Yes, that we have. So there are certain things that may work better for corporate plans than they do for public plans, but, yeah, I mean, we, we definitely need to explore some of these things. One of the other difficulties is, some of these things, to do them have, if you will, a fixed cost, whether you're a $7 billion plan or a $7 million plan, there's some sort of fixed cost, and so it, we have to be aware of some of the costs that are associated with doing these things for what, in the grand scheme of things, are relatively small plans.
Anything we can do to hear, with that volatility, reasonable cost, is something the city should be looking at.
Barry?
Other council members? Ms. Barry?
If I understand the, you had mentioned something about lump sum payments, and I'm, that's, that's something that we are wrestling with in, in my day job, with, with an organization I, with, which I'm involved. But I wanted to understand a little bit better. Are you talking, are you actually talking about the possibility of calculating a payment over X number of years and offering somebody that amount of money? So hedging your bets, assuming that Mrs. X is going to live another 15 years, right? Okay.
Right.
Okay. And how many people participate in the plan? Sort of, 100 and?
Well, we have about 320 people in the basic plan, and there's about 32 active police officers.
So did you do, just sort of off the, you know, in the back of the envelope, any, any sense of if you, even 10%, which would be a lot, participated in the lump sum payment? What, how would that reduce your volatility? I mean, do we have any idea about whether 10% is the, is the magic marker, or it's 20, or you'd need 50% of the people to, to agree to early?
To take a lump sum?
Yeah.
And, and there's a big difference between, is it something that we allow all 320 of the current active people to, to take when they leave, or is it a one-time thing that we offer to people who have already left? Can't offer it to people until you leave employment? So I don't know, I mean, we'd, we'd, to, to change the volatility, we'd have to probably at least start reducing the liabilities by 5, 10%, just to move the needle.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I'm not asking you to, you know, to do arithmetic just for the sake of it, but I was thinking if, you know, if 10% made an interesting change, that would be sort of interesting to think about, you know?
Yeah, we haven't done anything in that area, and I think it would be a, a huge shift, because again, you know, up to this point, it's, from an employee standpoint, one of the things of having a monthly annuity is that, you know, they never outlive it, so going to a lump sum would be a different concept, so there would be a lot of work that would need to go into that.
But it's, it's always voluntary. People can always
Right.
Take the annuity, it's just another option to people, but.
Right.
Okay?
Other council members?
Quick question. I think there's been a little discussion about the possibility, if we get the water fund, you know, sold, and there's a sort of a lump sum payment, would that kind of solve the woes, you know, if we got, contribute 5 or 10 million dollars towards the retirement plans? Would that really make this sort of a non-issue?
It would help with reducing or hopefully eliminating the unfunded liability, so that, that would help. We'd still have the volatility, but that would give us the space to think about some of what Ira just talked about, which is if we're overfunded, then we have some options to de-risk the plan.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just follow that up with this question, which is related. How much would it cost of that 10 million to put us on the footing that you think would be appropriate? The reason I'm going in this direction, I'm trying to get some sense of, you know, where we are relative to other jurisdictions our size, or other jurisdictions in this area. And, you know, we want to do all we can, all we should, plus some. As Ira says, we don't want to do more, because that's not right. Most things that come before us have, have a fiscal impact statement, you know, what's your estimation of what it would take in the current environment or after the GASB rules come in? Because my understanding is, all the boats drop when, I mean, we're going to be no worse off then than we are now relative to other jurisdictions. Is, is that right first? And then second, is there a number you can attach to what it would take to make us feel better?
I'm going to turn to you. You did a survey of, I mean, I would agree, just in the general statement, we're about as well-funded as other public plans.
I participate in.
When I read these articles, you know, in the national press, or in my hometown of Knoxville, where they actually had to go to referendum to abolish the pension system because they were, the government was going bankrupt, I mean, they were paying, yeah, that's, Ira, of course, knows. So we're, we're nowhere, we're not in that ballpark at all, of course.
No, I think.
No, just, just to give you an idea, in the, in the state of Virginia, of course, the big plan is the Virginia retirement system, which has its own funding issues. And then there are about nine other plans that have individual, their own plans, such as the city, you know, Fairfax County, Arlington County, Charlottesville, Richmond, Roanoke, and a few others. We meet every, every six months, and I just had a meeting a couple of months ago, and one of the things you list on there is what your rate of return is and what your funding status is. And so I think in, in the state of Virginia, Arlington County is about 95% funded, and Danville is about the same as us, and everyone else is not as well-funded as our plan, some of them down in the 70% and below area, which is where it gets real problematic when you get below 80% level, or particularly 75%. So, and, and we are. which is where it gets real problematic when you get below eighty percent level, or particularly seventy-five percent. So, um, and, and we are subject to market volatility, as Connie said. I mean, it, you know, our, the actuary report's a snapshot in time, which was July one, two thousand twelve, just to give you an idea of that volatility. If it had been done April one or had been done October one instead of ten million dollars in unfunded liability, about six million dollars. So it, you know, it, you know, you don't get to pick what it is. It's the same time every year, so.
Do, do you have a answer to the, you know, is there a number that would, you know, get us to the point where you could have the luxury to deal with the things that Ira was talking about? I mean,
I don't have any...
As Mr. Charter said, you know, we are looking at this sum of money and I've heard the same thing. So I'm curious what you say.
Yeah, we were unfunded by ten million dollars that, on July first. As Richard said, it was probably closer to six when we got by October first. And we'll have a better sense at January first where we are. I would love to fill that hole. If we had ten million dollars, we could start settling, taking five, ten percent of the volatility off the table.
Richard, please tell the staff, Wyatt, please tell the staff that the city, and this is not me, you're, this council, this is the whole of the council, have been what's considered the excellent sponsors of these plans. And that is a component that shouldn't be overlooked. You work for the city, for the city, the seriousness in which the city takes its obligations and its support, not just in yearly pay increases, but it's also in its payment to pension and other plan obligations. You can go into, of course, with the health benefits, you know, the pensions, another action, sort of much larger than the other whole, but we, the city has been an excellent sponsor.
Oh, you're, you're absolutely right. The city has always paid the retired contributions that have been determined by the actuary. And that is not the case with, uh, a number of other plans in the state, which is part of the reason why some of them have some real funding issues, so.
Yes, including the VRS. Did you want to say anything?
No, you're doing just fine.
Okay. Just on the income statement, there's also going to be some changes in how we come up with the income statement amount. So while in the past, the contribution amount was what went in on the income statement, some of the, those rules will be changing, not as drastically as the balance sheet stuff, but we'll be looking into, to that. So there are a bunch of things that are changing and are making things a bit more complex and definitely more volatile. The last page of that three-page, um, presentation is just a summary of some of the recent changes that the VRS, uh, plan has made. And, and wanted to bring this to your attention as more of an informational item, since I know we look at what is the VRS doing as, as one benchmark of looking at what we provide to the city employees. It was interesting to me to see that usually benefit changes, which are generally benefit reductions, are made for future hires. This change that the VRS made was actually to people who were not yet vested. So anybody who had less than five years of service had their benefits cut. That was a surprise to me. And even those who are vested, but if you're at least five years from retirement, some of the COLA is being potentially reduced. That was also a surprise to me. Working in the corporate world, that would not be allowed, so that was a particular interest. So just very briefly, final average pay is changing. This is the same change that we made for city employees hired after January one, two thousand twelve. Benefit multiplier is changing, so that's the benefit people are earning. The normal retirement date is switching to the same for those who are not vested, to the same that we're, have for currently the basic plan. The COLA is being capped. Uh, we have a cap, although it's not that low. And then the COLA timing for those who, um, this is the one that impacts everybody who is more than five years from retirement. If you leave and you have less than twenty years of employment and you leave with a reduced benefit, your COLA does not start at your retirement. It starts when you hit, would have hit your unreduced retirement age. So a lot of, little tweaks to the benefits. Interestingly enough, I think you've seen some of the projections of costs for the VRS, particularly the teachers' plan, even with all of these changes. You know, the employer cost, so in addition to the five percent the teachers contribute or the school district contributes on behalf of the teachers, the employer costs are going from eleven point six-six percent, uh, this fiscal year, up to nineteen point five percent of pay for fiscal nineteen. So not quite a doubling, um, but a, a very big increase in some of the VRS changes because VRS made the decision, or the state legislature made the decision not to contribute, the actuaries, uh, calculated contribution made the decision to contribute something less.
Ira?
Uh, thank you. We had the opportunity, and I think I've mentioned this before, but I'm going to go over it again, to meet with the chief financial officer of the VRS teachers, Mr. Barry Faison. All of you have received the aid memoir on the results of that. Connie was, uh, was very generous and was willing to come down and join us for that. Look, this VRS swamps all the other retirement issues. And these accounting changes will show thirty-nine million dollars in unfunded liability for a teacher, which is much larger than our plan. In addition, if we calculated it the way Moody's, it has been estimated that that number is more like sixty million dollars. Now, for a city like Manassas Park, which has a tremendous amount of debt, they, you know, I think there's an excellent chance, not only do they get downgraded by five notches, but they could be, they already weren't downgraded five notches. And I, I wouldn't be surprised when the private sector sees that this is affecting the payment capacity of Manassas Park, their access to capital markets will be severely compromised at that point. At our numbers, they're going to look clearly more closely because, and I know I've mentioned this before, but investors do not care if the cities are well-run or badly run, if the kids get a good education or the kids get a bad education. They do not care. The only thing they want to know about is what's the probability of repayment? And this data point affects the issue of your net position and your ability to repay your debt. When we get to the big funding issues for the schools that we heard, we will have to have more revenue sources because it will be extremely difficult to borrow at the sums we like to borrow with large negative net asset figure showing by the city. How much it'll affect, no one knows. It depends on a whole host of things, including the general condition of the economy, et cetera. But these changes are the beginning. It's my personal belief, this is just mine, that at sixty-three percent funded, the VRS will not be, will not be able to recover itself. And at some point, there will be reductions to the already retired teachers. I don't know when, but I think that will occur at some point. And here is the beginning of it, as they chip away at the benefits for existing employees with five years, then it'll be ten years, it'll be whatever it is, as they desperately try. The risk for them, of course, is they're going to try to double down and take a lot of risk in their markets to make the returns, which means you also take double the risk or more. And if it goes bad, they will be completely wiped out. So they're going, they're in a tough, tough position. One thing Mr. Faison said when I asked him, what was the most difficult part of his job? What was the, and he, I put it in the aid memoir and he cleared this. This is what he cleared. He said the most difficult thing for him was convincing school boards at the level of seriousness of the issue. He then added on his own in subsequent comment that school boards have gone to the general assembly and asked them not to increase the employer contribution in any given year, which means that they bumped up the, the need for future contributions is why you see nineteen point five percent, plus five percent from the teachers to meet the VRS funding requirements by FY nineteen. I mean, the numbers are simply, I, for me, they're staggering and unmanageable. And that's just a prediction on what's going to happen to the VRS teachers in the future. Not False Church's fault, and I repeat, the objective should be, how do we keep meeting our funding requirements? So when they actually solve the problem, we're still standing as an independent city, not already absorbed in some of us because we couldn't meet our pension obligations. We're not going to solve it, but we need to be in a position to provide enough money that we're there when they figure out how they're going to work it out.
All right, other council members?
All right, Connie, anything else and we can talk a little bit about process and next steps? So, um, one thing that I think that would be helpful, um, if the retirement board can bring back any recommendations to the council, I think we're all interested in trying to reduce some of the risks to the city. And there's various ways of doing that. I mean, the last action that we took was increasing the contribution amount. If we can just revisit, um, all the tools that we have in the toolbox, um, again, given where things are at now, where we think the markets are going, um, and what we're learning from the actuaries. And then again, I, I know that Connie and I have, have had a chance to talk about, you know, whether there's other systems that we can go to in the future as, um, folks in the area are having general discussions. So I think that's, that's worthy of exploring. I know that there's, um, some negatives to going to other types of plans or hybrids. But again, it's, it's worth considering, um, for future generations. It's not going to have a huge impact on us and we're not growing that much on the city side right now. But we are going to be changing how we do business in, 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 in the city with the upcoming sale of the water system. So I think it's another good opportunity to look at our benefits packages as well as we're, we're going to have to restructure how the city operates, given that, why, was about a third of our, our work is the water system. Is that about right?
Um, we have fifty-five employees that have the water system out of the three hundred fifty covered by the pension plan.
About three hundred and twenty, yeah.
There are a good number of school employees that are in the pension plan as well as that number.
Right, yeah. So I, I think it's, it's, um, worthy of discussions. So I, I don't take those off the table. I think, um, localities are talking about it, um, outside, within the state and outside of the state. So every, every employer's having these discussions, both on the private and the public side at all levels. So, um, I think it, it behooves us, even though we are well-positioned to, to reexamine that. And again, understanding that those, if we switch plans or go into another type of structure for retirement, that's, it, it's going to affect future generations and future employees. But I think that, that's a discussion the nation as a whole is having, that's not unique to False Church.
I would argue that if that's a change, I mean, putting it a little more plainly, if you will, moving to more of a defined contribution approach, um, that's also a change that's being made in the retiree health arena as well, is moving to a, here's a dollar amount for healthcare rather than here are health benefits. So a similar shift is being made in the retiree health space. And I, I would suggest that if we consider that, we think about that switch as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
What's the unfunded liability of the, of the health plans and the post-retirement benefits?
That one's not covered by the retirement board, so I don't know.
I, I don't know what it is, but I mean, it's, it's...
It's almost the same size as the unfunded liability for the regular wage.
Well, you had all the employees that have been here for a long time before they created that. So, yeah, you started out with a lot of unfunded liability. I would just, uh, you know, I certainly share everyone's concern, uh, just speaking, not only as a plan administrator of the pension plans, but also the HR director. And I just, you know, I don't want us to be in a si- uh, situation where every year we're changing what the benefit structure is. I, I think that's very disruptive and, and, um, as Connie said, I think there's a report, as of July one, two thousand twelve, we only had twelve people under the new plan. So as time goes on, we will have people under the old plan leaving and people under the new plan, which will reduce the normal cost somewhat. So I certainly understand your position from a funding standpoint and, and that type of thing. But, uh, and we can look at ways to reduce the volatility. But, uh, I think it's to every year to, to raise the hood and look at changing the benefit structure is, is, uh, not something that, that I would be in favor of.
No, I think, I think that's a fair point. And, and again, you know, we do need to take a longer look at where we're at. So taking a look under the hood and making sure that we're in line, um, not just on pensions, but salary compensation, future retirement health plans, um, is an exercise we shouldn't shy away from. Whether we do anything timing-wise, um, that's understood. But, but, um, you know, by the same token, I think we've gone back and a cou- couple councils ago, we looked at our, I believe it was our life insurance or medical plan? And we were, realized that there was major cost savings by, um, just changing providers. Providers. My, was that healthcare, Wyatt?
That was life insurance.
Life insurance. And it was significant. And, you know, there was a notion of let's, you know, it's all fine and well and we realized substantial cost savings without much change, um, to employees, as far as I'm, as far as I know. So, um, I, I think it's important to take a look at the whole package, not just one aspect of it, as we move forward. And I think all localities are doing it. So we're not the only ones who are looking under the hood, seeing, you know, how we can make it better. I think one thing that disadvantages us a little bit on this front is our size. We can't have twenty million plans and change it every year. So I, so I take that as a given, but that does not mean we shouldn't look at the whole package, year in and year out, to make sure that we're competitive and also look at reducing volatility and risks to the city. And Connie, thanks for your point about the, uh, health plans as well. So I don't know if that falls within...
I think that's a step we should take forward. Right now, the, the OPEB board is, is the CFO, the schools finance director, and the treasurer.
What does OPEB stand for?
Uh, the, the retiree health benefit.
Other post-retirement and employee benefits.
And I, I think there would be value in asking the retirement board to become the oversight and the fiscal agent for our OPEB fund as well. A, that'll help us look at the whole package together. And B, we have so much expertise on this board, um, that, that I think it would, it would help in the long term. So, uh, we'll, we'll continue that discussion, um, but I think possibly bring up a resolution to council that would
Title.
effectuate that, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. I mean, I, I understand the point and we should always be looking to see if what we're doing is, makes, uh, the most sense. That, that's a fair, uh, fair question. But that, to the last point that Connie mentioned, are really the big elephant on the table for us? I like that, elephant on the table.
I was just...
I always use that.
Between you and Nader, honestly.
I've been good. I've been good, Joanna. I've been staying in the metaphor lane.
That's right. Yeah, well done.
You know, but I mean, it's that big a deal.
It's that elephant on the table.
Uh, the, uh, what would you say, seventy-five percent increase? Or so seventy percent increase in the VRS
Yeah.
employer contributions will swamp, swamp any benefits we can get in the short term or even the medium term from adjustments on the city side. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but we just should keep in mind that that's the one that's going to drive the city's finances, not the, not the city side.
Unfortunately, other than making sure that, well, we're well-positioned, there's not much we can do about VRS. Including contributions, as we learn, without salary increases, which made very little sense, as we all talked about. But there you have it. So, all right, anything else by council members? All right, thank you. And does Wyatt's idea of trying to combine the groups make sense? Just so we're looking at things collectively or holistically, rather?
We'll, we'll look at it more holistically and bring out a recommendation back to the council. We'll leave, so we'll make sure that we want to take on this, but I think it's a great idea, but we need to consult.
Yeah, and I think Wyatt, if I, if I don't, if I'm recalling this correctly, I think that we, I don't know if we did it formally or gave you direction to... we, I don't know if we did it formally or gave you direction to take a look at our various providers and look to see if there's cost savings.
Well, we were talking today about our health benefit. We've got an initial quote that is a big number, and so I think everybody in the college on healthcare is going to be putting a lot of pressure on them to drive that number down, and we may even consider other options if that, we just got that number, I think, a wrestling here at the beginning.
No, we will keep a close eye on all benefits, so I hear you, and that's very important.
All right, thank you. Thanks very much.
We have Richard LaContra here to present the financial report. We also have on the agenda the FY13...
Which is on the work session agenda, just so you can see the revised numbers, this is...
Those are only just revised numbers, right, Wyatt? No other changes in there?
That's right. So that's what you approved at first reading.
The idea of the schools picking up...
Right, right. But it's not a further change from what we agreed to.
No, this is what you approved at first reading.
It's just a clean version.
Yeah. And as part of that budget amendment, I wanted to just have the opportunity for our chief of police to speak to the security items. Those were discussed from the dais, and we think we can help inform that discussion tonight as a setup for the council's action next week. Mr. LaContra.
I trust all of you have had an opportunity to look at the second quarter financials. I will touch on some of the highlights and lowlights, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions. We looked at the key indicators for the second quarter, and not only did we look at budget to actual, but we looked at year-over-year. And this is the second quarter that we've done that. Personal property taxes are up $327,000 in the second quarter. They're higher than budgeted, and 5% of, 5% over the year-over-year. The taxes are ahead of their budget targets for the second quarter, and they are ahead of collections. Our recodeation taxes are the frontrunner in that group of other taxes. However, we are still looking at meals and sales taxes. If you look at the budget to actual for the second quarter, particularly for sales taxes, you'll see it's up $966 over what we budgeted for the period. We also look at the fact that there is a lag, but when you compare it year-over-year, it's down. If you look at meals taxes, they're almost flat, which, again, certainly keeping an eye on what happens going forward, it does look like those particular indicators are In terms of the, well, any questions on the revenue? Ma'am?
In no particular order, and we've talked, you and I have talked about, we've, as a council, talked about the difference between organic growth and what I would call situational growth, you know, something that, a variable that's changed. So what I'm interested in here, and it's probably fairly easy to tease out, what's real organic growth and what's situational, because I'm sure everyone is going to be very interested in the excess revenue that you have projected, between 1.1 and 1.7, everyone's going to really want to dig into those numbers. So on the revenue side, I was, first of all, I wanted to congratulate you, the ability to project with a $966 variable is pretty impressive, you know, well done, in terms of sales tax.
Just lucky.
Yeah, that's, man, oh, man.
Ouija board.
Ouija board, wow, 966. So obviously, I wanted to dig into the personal, on the revenue side, I wanted to dig into the personal property tax, the license and permit, and miscellaneous. How much of that is situational? How much of that is organic?
I would say for all three categories, it's organic. I don't know of any particular situation that would have driven any of those three items.
So this is real, this is personal property tax?
Personal property.
So it's the same tax rate being applied from, okay? This is license and permits, and this is miscellaneous. Miscellaneous jumped up rather dramatically from a $46,000 budget to a 172 in actual, so they can't be exactly organic, right?
No.
There was a situation somewhere buried in there. But I was interested, I just wanted to make sure that we were, as we're fond of saying, you know, in terms of personal property and license and permits, it's apples to apples as opposed to some other, some other factor. So that council can celebrate, as well as the citizenry can celebrate marvelous growth in personal property taxes. Everybody is, no, you're buying new cars or something here, and that's what you're being taxed on.
I could contribute to that.
Did you? Well done, yeah. Not me, boy.
Nader?
Is he, is he, Richard, is Richard still answering on the revenue side?
Let's give Richard a...
Are you still answering on the revenue side?
Yes, ma'am. I was trying to give you some idea, the recyclables. I think that some of it has to do with recyclables, right? For the miscellaneous, yeah.
Is it a 200%? Personal property is what it is?
Yeah. Well, you know, once, the personal property is relatively easy, because once the bills go out, we know what the number is, so that's...
That was my question.
Okay.
So, to put it on your question, you know, organic versus situation, if I'm, tell me if I'm mistaken, and if I've misread this, because it does say that the tax credit was taken into account.
Yes.
So this has, what, two quarters of the lower tax revenue from last year in this FY2012 actual? Doesn't have the whole thing, but it has something, right?
This, we did the tax reduction in the fourth quarter of '12, okay? The budget number reflects that reduction, yes?
Okay, that is, so...
Okay.
All right, fourth quarter. So in effect, to put it in simple terms, in effect, the number that's for FY12 was something like $1.24 actually, because we gave back a little, and the FY13 fourth quarter will be at $1.27.
That's correct.
So in effect, it's situational because the tax credit actually reduced the revenues to a different tax rate than we normally charge, so in effect, if you don't have a living allowance excess, what we have is something between $200,000 and... It's more that if you took out that particular...
calculation, since that was affected by a one-time tax credit. So the real excess, you have to subtract the $933,000 from that excess in order to find out what organic growth actually existed, as opposed to something that is another consequence of the tax credit. Yes.
All right, other council members?
That will become, that will become very clear in the fourth quarter.
Other council members?
I've got a question or two for you. One, let me ask you about the recodeation charges. Are those, you said that's leading the group, is that because there are more transactions occurring, or the dollar value of each transaction is higher?
I don't have the details on that, but I can find out and get back to you.
It's interesting, because if the, if each transaction was for a higher dollar value, that suggests real estate is going up significantly in value. If there are more transactions, then that, maybe that's why, but I think it would be interesting.
I think it's the latter. I do have assessed value numbers, and they are at less than 3% in growth.
You have assessed value for this year?
Yes.
And so when would those become public or available to us? Or are they available?
They will be available in the next 24 or 48 hours.
So you say the...
You see it in your tax bill.
I don't want to see that for a while. But so you say the assessments are up between 2% and 3% this year?
2.9 approximately.
On residential, right?
Overall, 2.9 for everything.
Okay. Do you have any breakdown of that, like commercials, this, or...
Commercials, less than 2. Single-family is about 3 and 1/2. Townhouses are about 3 and 1/2. Condos are less than 1. Your overall residential's a little over 3%, and your multifamily is 5, okay? But the overall is 2.9.
And what did you budget? I remember the number between 2 and 3, but you must have used an actual number, didn't you, for your estimates? In other words, 2 and 1/2, 2.4, what number did you use for budgeting purposes?
Initially?
Yes.
2.
2 even?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I do have some revisions to share.
All right, other council members? All right.
Okay. On the expense side, overall, we're spending faster, but we are still running under budget. A lot of that has to do with contracts in various stages, either they haven't been fully executed yet, or there are things that are going to happen after the winter season. All right, so overall, we are monitoring the expenses. I'm trying to meet with departments quarterly to assess where they are and identify those underspendings as early as possible, so that we can look at reallocating those resources.
And most notably, in the contracts, if you look at public safety, we're 1.5 million underspending. That includes our jail services contract and our fire services contract. We'll be talking about those later today, but we have a number of invoices that are being reviewed right now under those contractors, and that makes up the lion's share of that line.
Questions on the expenditure side?
You anticipated my question about public safety. I had another question about the debt service number. Was there, there's a particular, what's the rationale for the debt service being?
It's just our estimate.
Oh, okay. And do you, and I can't remember, and I should know this, is there a process in which you inform us, based on your second or even third quarter numbers, how you project the numbers out at the end of the year? In other words, should we, is there, is there an alarm bell that should go off as we look at a second quarter with the expenditures the way they are, or do you anticipate that really once timing issues are sorted, you will probably be coming in on budget?
I can give you revenue numbers fairly early. Again, in my cover memo, I did indicate that we will have excess revenue somewhere between 1.1 and 1.7 million. Relating to Mr. Kalin's earlier comment, it might have been a little higher, all right, but I'm basing it on where we are now, and if everything remains flat. So it's about 1.1 to 1.7. On the expenditure side, it's a little more difficult, because we don't spend 1/12 of our budget every month. So that will be identified probably just after you pass the budget.
Great.
So if you were looking for that for comfort, no. We do, we do traditionally have a history of underspending. The percentages vary slightly, and we know that there are things, as we go forward, where the gap is closing in terms of the underspending. So I will be able to give you, again, something after the third quarter.
And just to wrap this up, I just want to revisit very quickly the guidance for the manager, see if there's any adjustments that council members think need to be made based on what we've heard this evening.
Do you want to, do you want to come down? The one thing that I think would be helpful is just a snapshot...
Where we are with the revenue forecasts and expenditure forecasts, the superintendent is presenting recommendations to the school board tonight, and so there might be people who know what the superintendent is proposing. I don't know it right now in terms of what the transfer request would be. But what Richard is passing out is a pretty honed-down and simplified look at the overall operating budget parameters. So if you take the top line, where you have total revenues, our latest forecast is a 3.88% growth in revenues. When we met in November, we thought it would be a 3.2% growth. If the general government grows at 3.8% or at economic growth, what we've laid out here is a situation where the school division grows at 6%. And under that scenario, because there's a decrease in our capital expenditures, the, and all of that decrease in capital expenditures then goes to the benefit of the schools, allowing them to grow at 6%, that is a balanced budget. After that, any increase in the school transfer by 1% translates into 1 penny on the tax rate. So if they grow at 7%, that would need a penny. You would need a tax rate of $1.28, up to some of the higher numbers shown here. But it's, because the school transfer amount is approximately $30 million, and a penny on the tax rate generates just over $300,000, every percentage increase in the transfer is a penny on the tax rate. So we prepared this simplified look just to, so the council could see the overall outline of the operating budget. The, and of course, we'll know shortly what the superintendent is recommending to the school board. We won't know what the school board adopts until the end of February or first week in March.
All right. So questions on this before we, and I think this is, I found this very helpful, so I don't know if other council members did.
Just clarifications. Okay, general government is 3.28. You have this two numbers for the school division, this school division, and then you have another line, which is the sum of...
That's the sum of general government and the schools, so that's our overall operating budget.
Okay, that's the operating budget. And...
So the difference between 6.2 and 6.0?
So we're basically saying we're going to increase our operating budget by 4.9%.
That's correct. General government and schools put together, our operating budget would grow by 4.9%.
Okay. And that's balanced?
Yes. Because of the decrease in the, in the lines below, the contributions to capital.
So why are we doing that?
Well, that's a policy question, but to fund according to policy, the contribution to capital reserves could decrease from 1.2 million down to 886,000 and still remain within policy as adopted. Now, when we've looked at the CIP yesterday or last week, we have huge capital challenges coming down the road. But that 1.2 million is what we have used for fund balance restoration. And so with fund balance effectively restored back to policy, we can consider other options.
This is the same, this is the same story you've seen every year. You take, the reconciling element is capital investment. Every year, it's the same thing. That's where all the reconciliation takes place.
Well, where, where the situation is different is that in years past, we've actually cut actual projects. And we are in a better position today because we have built into the tax rate actual contributions to PGO, which we didn't have in 2006. And we have funding for capital reserves and built into the budget today, which we didn't have in 2006. So with the, we, we put these out there for discussion as policy options. If, if the decision were to keep all of that amount that we have used just for fund balance restoration and keep that baked in purely for capital, then the school division growth could only grow 3.88%.
Yeah. It's basically a penny when you add those numbers up, penny and 1/2.
394,000 is the decrease in capital contribution, so it's just over a penny.
And just so I'm clear, is that, the reason why that's in there is because we've hit-
17?
17%?
Now, Richard would argue that we, and the CAFR-
For FY '13, we've hit 17%.
Okay. But how about on PGO? Why, why is that PGO number?
Well, what this stands for is that PGO stays at $600,000 as a per annual contribution to PGO capital. And that, you know, when you look at the CIP that Cindy's presenting upstairs, that's a, that's an austere pay-as-you-go budget. But that's, that's where, that's the way this is laid out. I mean, that's, that's what the CIP right now is built around.
And this is the austere CIP? Or is this not really include the CIP?
Well, this is, the CIP that's being presented upstairs right now assumes $600,000 contribution to PGO. So there's always the, the trade-off between PGO and debt or PGO and not doing things at all. Those are, those are the three options.
But is the debt service right now with what's being proposed baked into this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Again, this is, this is just, this is just a guide. This isn't what I'm proposing or I don't think what the manager's proposing because there are impacts. And I've tried to give you two brief statements there. Departments absorbing inter-jurisdictional agreements will have to be cut to absorb those increases. So while we may project general government growing at 3.88, which is the revenue growth, that doesn't necessarily accomplish what we need to. You also have the vehicle issues.
And I think the, the way to translate that into a reality really is the 3.88% growth is essentially eaten up by the increased cost of inter-jurisdictional agreements.
That is correct.
So what we're talking about is with, even though we're saying a 3.88% growth, that means it's not new programs.
That's right.
It's just paying, it's status quo.
It's treading water.
It's treading water status quo, not bringing other services online or anything else. Other questions and then let's take comments?
Phil, did you have?
Just one question. So the way this is laid out, I'm not saying either of these things would happen, but the extreme positions would be, let's say we all got up in the morning, wanted to fund 150 million dollars in capital expenses. We would be able to see exactly the impact of that on the tax rate because as you've laid this out, you know, we're able to go forward as an enterprise, general government, schools would get 6%. We fully fund the fund balance, et cetera, et cetera. So anything that we decided to do in the capital area would increase the tax rate accordingly. Is that, is there, there's nothing here that's not factored in that we can anticipate? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's helpful. And if a taxpayer sees his or her assessments go up 2.9%, whatever the number was, then, and the tax rate obviously stays the same, then his or her tax bill goes up by that amount of money in order to keep their payout flat. Not suggesting that, but if we were to do that, we'd have to lower the tax rate to, what? 125, 124? Is there a number that we have to advertise or that we can tell people?
The equalized rate?
The equal, yes, sorry.
Yeah. It's very complex, the way the state government, the state government has you do it, and it's not intuitive.
But you can, right. You can, you can figure something around 124, 125.
Okay. The, the good news is about assessments apparently not going up, you know, 6, 10, whatever percent is that it's not going to be an enormous sum of money if we went along these lines here.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, one thing just to be mindful of, and I don't know what the school transfer budget is going to be, but it's-
It's not going to be 6.
I'm pretty sure it's not 6%.
All right. Other, other questions and then we can jump into comments. Questions? Ira?
I want to thank Wyatt for really sticking his neck out on that prediction. You know, and the sun may come up tomorrow. Just a statement, again, I feel, I mean, the capital side of city, city expenses has been the place that has absorbed continually the cuts because it's for projects. Our maintenance is far behind, the whole, the issue of stormwater, the roads, the streets, everything is behind because, and then why do we have a $10 million renovation for City Hall? Because we haven't been doing the repairs we should have been doing all the years. Because we keep cutting and cutting and cutting and then the bill comes in for 10 million bucks. Now, there are other things we're going to be doing, but this is part of the problem of putting it up because when the bills come due, they're big. And this constant cutting, the capital side comes back and there will be a point where it will not be able to even reach what we calling policy guidelines. I don't, the policy guidelines are not exactly that rigorous in terms of matching what we need to have and what we're actually funding. It's more like this is all we can afford, so this is what we're going to put in. But I haven't seen a real close meshing of the two. So a word of caution, these negative numbers, even if they're relative, look relatively small and nominal amounts, you know, it's just a step in the wrong direction. Absolutely in the wrong direction.
All right. I guess we are on to comments. All right. Can we, if we can focus this into a discussion about the guidance to the manager. So what I'm hearing so far, at least from Ira, is that the focus should remain on capital. I think that's already in the manager's guidance. So, Mr. Callen, are you suggesting any changes based on what you've heard so far to the guidance?
No.
Other than, Mr. Shields, keep focusing on capital, which is already in there.
And, and one note, I, I just want to, for council's information, what's being presented here is, is not different from what was presented on November 28th. So it's not as if, you know, since November 28th, we've come up with a different proposal in terms of the capital side. It, it doesn't negate the point that was made. The, the capital funding is a key effort for us, but I didn't, I didn't want this to be understood as, as a change or a surprise.
All right. Other council members? I'm just going to go down the line.
Yep.
Okay. Just one thing. And I hope in the vein of what Ira's saying, as we get to the point where we're talking with the school board, I think it would be helpful if their number is over 6% for us to be able to offer some kind of comparison on the capital side. In other words, if we were not able to give them everything that they wanted on their operating side, but over the next few years, we worked in more capital expenses and the same truth to the city, can we show that somehow? I mean, is there some way to show the effort that we would expend in the tax rate to do something with City Hall, to do something that the schools want so that we can say as a whole package, you know, we're improving your working environment generally for the city employees, for the teachers, even though we can't give you, you know, more than 6%? Is that something reasonable to ask?
Mr. Duncan, I think where you're going, this, this was a topic of discussion when we were looking at revenue share, is whether you include capital, debt service on a revenue share agreement as a percentage of the transfer whole bundle. So I think several of us in the, in the group felt that that was a very good, sound way of looking at things. It didn't come to resolution from the group, but several members, including myself, that thought, thought that's a transparent way of addressing it, especially if we are going to meet our capital needs. As you recall from the PTA, providing my own view, again, I'm very sensitive to the balance between operating expenses and what we're trying to do on the capital side. We can't ignore one or the other.
So if we're, but we're not going to do revenue sharing in this budget cycle?
We don't have formal agreement. That's right.
Okay. But we could still-
We could still talk about that.
Go in the direction that you're talking-
And I'm very pleased to hear that you seem to be at least looking to explore that. So I think that's a-
Sure. I mean, there's precedent for that. We basically had that kind of posture a few years back when we were doing Maryland Henderson. And, you know, we told the schools, look, you know, we'd love to do everything, but we can't, we're building a new school, here you go. And they were on board with that.
And I think that makes sense if we're going to try to tackle some of the large capital expenses on the school side. So if we're going to look at that and that means having discussions about reducing some of the operating to make the numbers work, I think that's worthwhile having. So thank you for sharing that.
If I could just note for the council that just checked online, and my understanding is that the superintendent has recommended a $3.2 million increase to the school budget, which would reflect an 8.5% increase. The, I haven't checked those numbers, but that's just what's being reported in the-
So that's roughly an additional 2 cents?
2 and 1/2.
2 and 1/2? Okay. Wyatt, are you, are you, those, that's accurate, I hope?
Let me do the math just on the percentage.
Can you do the math while we, while we talk? All right. Other council members? Ms. Barry?
Done.
Ms. Barry Snyder? You're good with the guidance as it is?
Yes.
Okay. Great. All right. So am I. So we're good. Wyatt, you done checking the numbers?
Yeah.
Wyatt, who gave Wyatt the calculator is what I want to know?
Yeah, it's bad news. I calculate that to be a 10.8% increase in the transfer.
Okay.
So something doesn't square.
All right. Why don't we have that number revisited? Ah, it's the community services piece that we think is missing.
If that includes an increase in the community service piece, I don't know. We, we need to check it.
Okay. So why don't we not have that number out there until we get it right? So I hope our local media is not publishing the number until we sort out the numbers. Well, it's out there. I think people can do their own, own math. But it sounds like staff needs a little bit to just do the calculations.
Okay. So that's the overall school budget? Including state?
Okay. So what does that mean in English, Wyatt?
That, 20% of the school budget is, is state funding and so, so the direct line between the overall increase is, is in a direct line to the, to the transfer increase. So we'll-
So forget everything you've said.
Well, if, if it is the 7.8% increase, oh yeah.
We, we need to know the transfer amount accounting for all expenses.
Not the overall budget, we need the transfer amount.
Yes. Not, not the overall budget increase because that's meaningless for us.
That's right.
Okay. So scratch everything you've heard.
Okay.
All right. Okay. I think that takes us through the, and we're on to the ordinance.
Thanks.
And again, no changes other than just-
Cleaning it up.
Cleaning it up. Wyatt, did you have anything on this that you needed to run by council?
What I'd like to, to do with council is just let you hear from the police chief about the work we're doing together with the schools on, on emergency preparedness and security. There's two-
And on that front, the, the letter, when, you sent the letter out, I believe, council members were copied on it, which included the public safety piece?
That is correct. And in that letter, there's a reference to a request that the chief of police provided a written recommendation on the fence specifically, which I'm about to pass out. But we wanted to augment that with sort of a bigger picture of, of the work that we're doing together. And so I asked the chief and Captain Campbell to come forward as well. Let me pass these documents out.
I think Wyatt's passed out two memorandums. One dated January 14th, which is the recommendation on the fence. And then today, January 22nd, and I'm not going to read it to you much, I'm just going to hit the highlights in terms of school safety and our vision as to public safety and how we are dealing with some of the school safety issues that we all have realized almost every day, it feels like. But the City of Falls Church has been working together with the City of Public Schools and the Catholic Dyson of Arlington-St. James, and we enjoy a collaborative relationship. We all behold the safety in the schools as our number one paramount priority. For the most part, in achieving the best practices in any of these schools, it has to be a systems approach. As many of you know, we have one SRO in the city and we have one community service officer. And the system, it comprises of not only the people that are involved here in the city, but in the schools, but also the facilities and technology. And all of those systems within this school system and in the city have to work together. Recently, you've seen a lot of things on the news, may it be man-made disasters in school systems. And just to kind of break it down for you in terms of public safety, what does that mean? Incidents are usually based in four different phases. You have your preparation that we do day to day. You have your emergency response to something that would happen, maybe natural, man-made. You have recovery, which is the crisis management portion of an emergency, and then you have the mitigation portion. In preparation, as I said, in the, in the system, it's, it's a constant fundamental principle that we do every day. We have, again, enjoyed in the city, a community services officer, a school resource officer, and the memo says five crossing guards, but we have four crossing guards that serve the schools each and every day. The SRO and the CSO are integrated into the schools and embedded in the campus is a office for the police officers. The four crossing guards provide a high prevent, presence, excuse me, at the key intersections and sidewalks in and around the schools. The systems approach also, as of late, includes the uniformed police officers on patrol. What we have done is we have made sure that they are doing direct patrols inside the schools and also scheduling lunches throughout the week so they're familiarizing themselves not only with the school facility, but with the kids, the staff. And what you will find is most police officers on the street and patrol in most communities aren't familiar with how to interact with kids. And it's a bit intimidating for them as, as, it's not as much for the kids. But, so we've incorporated that with City of Falls Church. In addition to that, the transportation system here in the city, particularly as it deals with the schools, you have a number of officers that visit the bus stops in the morning, which has been- which has been touted as a, as a nice thing from the parents who stand out with their kids. And then occasionally, the officers will ride on the school bus randomly to interact with the kids and the school bus drivers. Captain Campbell here is working with the schools right now, currently on the new ordinance that you all have at least heard the first reading on, I believe, with the school bus safety video enforcement program. And then here of late, after Newtown, the city's emergency manager, fire marshal, and the lead SWAT instructor have developed and trained, training for the faculty of not only St. James, but the public schools. And the purpose of the training is to help the school and the faculty make decisions under stressful times. They've evaluated the emergency action plans. Some of the private schools is married with the public schools in terms of some of their plans, and helping out each other. We've also reintroduced the alertfalschurch.gov, Rome Secure Alert System, to just highlight some of the resources that are available to these teachers, which is very important. I mean, they can set up strategic groups. For instance, if something was to happen at Mary Ellen Henderson, and the teachers were in a strategic group that had cellphones on them, we could actually send them messages to certain cellphones, maybe in the classroom or whatever the, the police have arrived, or whatever. And future mitigation plans and/or training, we are planning co-training with police and faculty of private and the public schools on tabletop exercises and a functional exercise to test all the resources and emergency personnel. Captain Campbell here is going to lead an interdisciplinary team with all the stakeholders that will meet regularly to look at multi-dimensional type projects. You talk about the ongoing personal training, the facility upgrades, the transportation needs, the technological advances, and any best practices and policies that need to be changed for our future needs. So that in a nutshell is what we're doing now, and what we continue, we look to continue to do in the future. And we're here for any questions that you may have.
Council members, questions for the chief? Ms. Barry?
This is, you know, obviously, a very, you know, robust and thoughtful response to, you know, to sort of the unthinkable, but thank you for being so, you know, so thorough. I guess what I was expecting to hear tonight was your further thoughts on the idea of this fencing notion entirely. Because that's gonna be useful, I mean, 'cause we're, that, that's a decision that's right in front of us, so.
Sure.
If I could have your thoughts.
As I understand, the fence was presented in prior, prior years as a CIP to, for security for the schools. I think the fence for, for not only the community, but for the schools, also provides a physical barrier and a symbol to, there has changed, there has been change. There are schools out there that do fence their campuses. We would have, obviously, some requirements and suggestions about the fence itself. There are some, some fail-safe opens and fail-safe closes that we would be concerned with. Obviously, the school is a landing zone for a medevac, so there's fire official issues that need to be addressed. There is the, all the accesses in and out of the school in terms of how they would be managed and what hours they would be managed are, are concerns that we would have. But it is something that is visible, that I think that the community could point to as a means of enhanced security. The fence is not gonna keep out the person that's intending to go in there and do harm. The fence is going to keep out somebody that may want an opportunity to commit a crime or passing through. So it will assist in some, some of that traffic, some of the pedestrian traffic. It's a high pedestrian area, you have the metro, you have the Weston Shopping Center, you have the Virginia Tech campus. It's very city. And so, with that, the fence would help in some of that.
Mr. Mayor, could I just follow up?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so, so just a follow-up, so, I mean, that, that makes, you know, I think intuitive sense to me that it, that a fence is, is, is obviously a physical barrier, it's a symbolic piece if nothing else, and, and there's, there's power in symbolism too. But the, the request that's in front of council, it, there's a specific dollar amount, and that's $200,000. Do you feel, or have you had sufficient conversation with the schools such that you believe that what the schools want to accomplish with the building of this fence and the parameters that you've, you've expressed, which are very important in terms of, of police and medical access, et cetera, can be accomplished with that $200,000? In other words, what, what I don't wanna have happen is that the money is expended, and it turns out it wasn't enough, or it wasn't, if it wasn't thought through sufficiently?
I have not had that direct conversation.
Okay.
I haven't, we haven't sat down face to face and had that direct conversation yet.
Okay, all right, so that's important.
Yeah, and I can just peg, I'm gonna go a little out of order and just piggyback off the comment that Ms. Barry just mentioned.
That we can-
We, we, I, I don't want a situation where, and I mentioned this, I hope, pretty clearly at, at our last meeting on this, I don't want a situation where a contractor or a consultant is designing a fence for security and the police department and our fire marshal, who are our first responders, are not at the table. So, I don't view that as acceptable. I'm not saying that that's what's happened, but we need to make sure that the chief and the fire marshal are empowered. And I think one way of doing that is specifically tying it to the budget ordinance, to make sure that that language is in there, to make sure that our police department is, has our backing. So, so I think it's, it's critical that that happens, both for safety reasons, dealing with the fence, but also making it clear that it's our first responders that have the responsibility for the overall protection of our public facilities in the City of Falls Church. So, those are my two cents. I leave it up to the chief and Wyatt to work out the language to go into the budget ordinance, but I'd like to see that. I don't know how other council members feel about it.
Well, if you're asking, I will, I'll say how I feel about it. I have to say, I have, I had concerns at our first meeting, our first reading, on putting up a fence, and I, my concerns have not diminished, but probably grown. I have to say that I, my knee-jerk reaction, or my reaction is that I don't like the idea of fencing in our schools. And I think that, as you've said, at least as I've understood what you've just said, that if someone who wants to come in, generally speaking, they'll come in the front door, they're known to people, and they won't, you know, be seeking to come in through the perimeter. And so, it seems to me that the case hasn't been presented to me fully, that in fact, we need to fence off, fence the entirety of our schools. I like the idea that our schools are generally open, that people can use our facilities, and that they're not, you know, forced to go through a choke point to get in and out. There's a lot of activity every day of the week up there, I know, 'cause I, I have three kids who participate in activities, and the place is always hopping. And I think a fence is not gonna help that much with that, and I'm concerned that it won't add that much to security, but give kind of a false sense of security. So, I have to say, I'm not really sold, particularly with your remarks tonight, of the absolute need for a fence. And so, I have reservations about it, I guess is what I'd like to say. Thank you.
If, if I could, I, we were up at the school, up to high school last week, observing a lockdown drill that, that they were conducting. The fire marshal was up there with us, and it was at that point that we, that we discussed further the creation of, of an interdisciplinary team between the schools and the police department and the fire department, to discuss some of those issues. And we did bring up some of the issues regarding the fence. And I think a couple of things were mentioned with, with Sevi up at the schools, for example, that had not been completely considered regarding the fence, and we're all going into this with some pretty high expectations of being able to discuss some of these issues and come up with, with reasonable and good solutions for security for the schools on a, on that type of basis. And so, that is something that we're hoping to discuss here shortly in our, our first meeting that we, that we have with the schools. That's one of the many things that we're gonna have on the table.
If I could follow up, maybe I might suggest that we wait for the outcome of those discussions, and then maybe hear back from you, and then make further decisions or recommendations here in council.
One way to handle it, maybe not specifically lifting a fence, but a value amount to have in there, and then the schools working with the police department coming up with best solutions utilizing that money. Maybe a fence, maybe a fence and something else, et cetera.
I don't know, to me, I guess I'd wanna know what the proposed solution is before we allocate money specifically to address it, as opposed to just sort of randomly picking the number for the fence and saying, you know, come up with something to spend for this. I think it'd be better to come up with what your solutions are, your recommendations are, and then hear of those, and then decide what funds to allocate. I guess that we might-
Which, looking at the memo, that would be essentially putting into operation recommendation, which I'll label as recommendation two, which is the police department slash school system interdisciplinary team.
What line is that?
There's no line number, it's page two of the memo.
We got two memos.
Sorry, it's this one.
Interdisciplinary team is going to assist in a lot of venues. Not only this fence issue, but you're talking about the video enforcement program is going to have more of an impact on the police department in terms of, you know, continuing the integrity of the enforcement out there in community as well. So, when we get to this interdisciplinary team, we'll be able to ferret out all of those workload issues and everything else that comes along with suggested new programs and resources, may it be the fence, or, or these type of things.
I take it this, this group has not taken up the fence issue?
Right. This, this group was just suggested here of late by Captain Campbell. The schools had told us that they would, they don't mind us taking the lead in it, in this, but we need to make that happen in the next, it's only been a cou, like a week since we've suggested it to them. So, we're moving along in terms of that portion of it. As far as all of the other, in the training, the direct patrols and all that is already underway.
Let me just follow up on, how quickly can we get this group together to meet on the fencing issue? Which is the immediate request before us. And, and I understand that it sounds like the police department supports it, but that's not clear whether the fire marshal and our health and human services were equated into that, so.
I was hoping for the end of this week, or the end of this week or the beginning of next week to have our first meeting. I'm waiting to hear back from, from Sevi up at the schools, who is going to make sure that someone from each of the schools is participating in the meeting, so that, we're just trying to, to gather a date, and then it's going to be a regular meeting that we do at least once a month to discuss various issues. So I'm hoping for the end of this week, if not, it'll be the very beginning of next week.
All right. Other council members? Dave?
Thanks a lot. I'd like to express my appreciation to the chief and the police department for your whole approach to this issue. I recall from barricade squad last summer, there was not an, a dearth of opinions as to what to do, but the, the police know what to do, and they handled it well. So I have confidence that, that you will do what needs to be done in this case as well. I like everything I hear about the approach. I think we oughta go ahead and appropriate the money, but I think there oughta be a check on it with the, with the police and fire marshal. If this isn't the right thing to do, then I would expect that, that money will be redirected in some other way. But I think there's, the community expects, you know, this matter's been put in front of us, and I do like the approach, Mayor, that, that you were suggested, and, and there may be additional money, which we're gonna have to come up with in the future. We might even consider sending the NRA a bill, but that's aside. I also wanted to inquire about the, the gang, the successful gang efforts have been in part regional, and I don't, you really don't need to disclose much to me, but is there sort of some regional discussion about best practices and how the emergency services can coordinate and that sort of thing? And then linkage with the mental health system, is the information flowing that needs to flow, and should there be recommendations made, either to the federal government or the state government? And while I'm on it, I'd appreciate your, just, you know, as we go forward, your analysis about what else we oughta be doing, not only directly in terms of expenditures, but as advocates. So, that's all general, you don't need any particular, you know, you don't need to give me any particular answer today unless you had something on the regional aspects.
As far as gangs are concerned, Northern Virginia Chiefs of Police and the Northern Virginia jurisdictions all support the Northern Virginia Gang Task Force. And I get a report every week in regards to all of the things that are going on in the region in regards to gangs. That works, and has been working, and we have been supporting that through contribution, through our, through our budget. We have also reaped the benefit of having the Northern Virginia Gang Task Force in our jurisdiction. As far as the system in terms of mental health and SROs in schools, there are so many, many story, successful stories that go, that don't make the news, that they've prevented shootings, or they found the bullied kid, or, or, there are so many of those stories, and it's born out of SROs, schools, and mental health working together. Now, those aren't the ones you're gonna see on the news. The ones you're gonna see on the news are the ones that are the crack in the system. And Connecticut is a perfect example. He wasn't in the system. So the system wasn't able to take that flag. The schools did exactly what they were supposed to, as did the police department. I mean, the chief of police in that town was one of the first responders, and he would be the first to tell you that he wasn't a first responder, it was the school system that did that. Because all of the administrators did the right thing, as did the teachers. So, they had a robust, safe system, and then you had this guy in crisis that took the opportunity. They had locks, they had everything that they had to have in place. And so now they're in a recovery stage, and we're all gonna learn from that. And we're gonna continue what we're doing. But there are a lot of successful stories that you won't hear about the SROs. It's the busiest job you can have in a police department, is being an SRO in a high school or a middle school. You're the sheriff, you know, in that, in that little entity, and it, it's very busy. So they do so much prevention, and, and we are, we're privileged here in the sense that we've had a history, we've had a fairly long history here in the city with an SRO program, with the community service officer program, and we have two systems, the private school and the public school system, that trust us. So, I don't know if you have any more to speak to that?
That pretty much says it all. Our community services officer is very active in, in the private school, and Steve Rower, SRO, does a phenomenal job up at the schools and has an excellent reputation with them, and I think that is what keeps our communications open and is gonna help through all of these situations and the security matters that need to be discussed in the future.
Right, I, I fully endorse everything that you've said, and the approach is a very sound one, and I urge you to maintain it, and whatever you need from the city council, bring it to us. The second point was specifically whether there's any regional discussion of these issues that have emerged since Newtown. And again, you don't need to be specific, but just that it's going on, is there anything we need to take to the council of governments on this?
Regionally, at, at my level, I have been in discussions with the Northern Virginia Chiefs of Police, and the, actually, Virginia Chiefs of Police Association executive director, Dana Sherrod, who is going down to Richmond daily to kind of address these issues, and what are we doing as police chiefs? And speaking to that, you know, collectively all around the room, everyone is scratching their head with the recommendations- with the recommendations of putting an SRO in the elementary schools. And that's not a reality that we're gonna be able to do. And what it gets down to is exactly what you're saying, is we really do need a systems approach where the mental health is connected with the SROs, which the schools are connected to the police again. And then there is the whole technology piece. If you look locally at the recent school shootings in the region, probably the closest and nearest one was Prince William County in 2005. It was a middle school at Bull Run where the student who had, I believe, a parent that was working in there, had approached that school with, I believe it was a shotgun. And what assisted in that was technology. They were being able to pinpoint the threat and then the officers were directed to that threat. And we talked about that. And we talked about how it is that the officers have been trained, probably for a decade now, on rapid intervention training, which is the paradigm shift from Columbine. As you remember with Columbine, those kids went in there with the intention to kill. That was not in our playbook. We thought people went in to take hostages. And after Columbine, what you had is police departments changing the way that they did business. So Columbine was a whole paradigm shift. Newtown is a culture shock. And the reality is that those schools and those teachers and those administrators did all the right things. And we will continue to get down that path to address these issues, 'cause if we, that's the only way we're gonna be able to do things better and understand each other in terms of relationships and build trust. And it's gonna be in the training and the exercises. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Other council members?
So as far as-
Can I just add a little more comment that's related to the budget request, but not what we've specifically addressed, which is the request for additional buses and the like? And I guess I would just ask, and I mentioned this to the school folks last time, but to the extent you all are able to work together to try to increase the number of kids who walk to schools, A, for their own health, but B, also for just school buses and the like, I would certainly appreciate it. I would welcome any role you might have to play to get more kids walking. We're such a small community. Seems to me we oughta be able to get kids off buses and, you know, onto the sidewalks and walk into school at a nice little place like we live in here. So I would encourage you to work with the schools to try to come up with a plan, if you can, to encourage and increase the number of kids who walk into schools.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So as a way forward, what I would, what I'm hearing is a bit more work between the city and the schools to make sure that this is in the overall safety interest of the children. So I think what may make sense is, this is already advertised for Monday, that the police department, fire marshal and health and human services meet with the school reps before Monday, if at all possible, to discuss the fencing issue. And then report back to council. All right. Council, how do you all feel about that? Does that seem like it addresses the comments that we've heard so far? All right, everybody's good?
Yeah.
Ms. Berry?
I think, again, I think the important thing is, and I don't wish to put words in people's mouths, but a specific request has come before council. Obviously, everybody here on council wants to do the right thing for, and wants to react swiftly to protect the kids. But I think that the question before us is, you know, is this the right move? If it is, that's what we want to do. If it isn't, we want to do that. We want to do the needful. And I think that's the reluctance you may be hearing. So we, for me, certainly it will be very important to have the police department's sign-off on this methodology. And that you need to feel comfortable with it, your colleagues need to feel comfortable with it, because if you don't, I'm certainly prepared to vote against that particular issue. I also just wanna to say on record, and I'm gonna have to go through the council tapes, but I regret that this is happening at the last moment. I regret that we're having this conversation today and we have a vote coming up on Monday, because certainly Dr. Jones, when I brought this, when I asked this question on Monday, left council with the impression that this conversation had happened. Otherwise, I don't think we would have been having, that's my concern. And I'm perfectly happy to go back through Granicus and see if I misunderstood, but I regret that there is this sudden urgency to meet and come to a resolution, 'cause I want that resolution obviously to be the right one. So I apologize on behalf of, you know, certainly my misunderstanding, but I was certainly impressed that this conversation, a robust conversation had been had with the police.
Yeah. If I can just, Ms. Berry, you're, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, I think what we're looking for is not just the police department. Certainly, they're gonna be leading the effort, but that it should include the fire marshal-
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
-and health and human services with the ultimate holistic recommendation coming-
Yes.
-from the chief incorporating the other views from the city.
I amend my remarks. Absolutely.
Ira?
Just to confirm Jahan's understanding, I think what we heard at the city council meeting was that at the last minute, you had been, the police department had been consulted and had said it was okay.
That, I think that's-
That's what I heard.
I think that was, since, I think I started that discussion, my sense had been that there hadn't been that communication. I pressed the issue with the superintendent and I think we got the, we all get along and play nice with each other kind of thing, without sort of fully saying, the conversation happened X, X and Y was discussed. So I think we may have all walked away with different interpretations. My view was, I wasn't sure what happened, hence my request to say, we need to put it in writing-
Right.
-through Wyatt. So I think it was unclear. And we tried to put some clarity into it by the letter that Wyatt sent the superintendent. That was sort of what I walked away from. It was open for multiple interpretations, walking away from the meeting.
That's what you got.
So hence the letter.
There was, when we spoke, me and the superintendent immediately thereafter, during Newtown and thereafter Newtown, there was a lot of discussions on just overall safety and next steps and what's going on currently. At that discussion, there was not any discussion about the fence. As the weeks, as the week went on, there was a number of things going on in the community to include the Nova firearms. There were a number of things that were going on about this incident, but nothing about the fence, a sit-down meeting about the fence, no. My understanding of the fence was that it was put in previous CIPs by the schools. And I think in light of what happened in Newtown, it was brought before you. And then there was discussions as to, is this something we should be doing? And then we set some parameters around that. But have we sat down and looked at the footprint specifically? No. We have discussed it with the fire marshal. We have talked. And I think that you probably heard the details in regards to the fail-open, fail-safe and some of the things that the fence would provide. And then I was asked to set a recommendation based on that. And that's, so we need to. And it was based on, actually what Captain Campbell came up with, with the interdisciplinary team, I think, much like we do with traffic. When we examine traffic issues in the city, we have a multi-discipline team that looks at it. And we all get perspectives. And then we meet regularly. We meet once a month and we talk about issues. And this would serve a similar purpose.
All right. So I think we're clear for Monday? And just as an aside, I would just renew my request on the pneumatic gun issue, BB guns, AKAB guns, if we can try to get something to council and also working with the school community on that. So it doesn't need to happen as part of this conversation, but more of a way of a reminder. And anything else that we can do dealing with firearms, other than pneumatic guns, to bring forward, based on what we're authorized to do under Virginia law?
Can I ask one more thing? Can I just ask real quick about the dog bite issue that happened? I think it was at TJ, right? So what's the penalties for that? How is it enforced? Sort of give us a real quick view on what transpired and what the repercussions are for folks who have dogs that are not on leashes and they bite, you know, somebody as it happened there?
City code, for the most part, requires leashes. There's a leash law. There's an exception to it, being that if you have your dog out in public for a walk and he is not on a leash, he must be controllable, voice-controllable. What happened is, my understanding was that the victim that was bit came outside of the school prior to bringing other people outside, other children outside, saw the dog, asked them to remove the dog, put the dog on the leash. The dog came over, bit her. There was some conversation. She was trying to find out about who the dog belonged to, rabies shots, that sort of thing. It was not the pet's owner, but a person with the pet's owner made some comment that was rude, to say the least. And they left the park without getting that information. Our animal warden, recognizing the urgency in the situation, was able to get to our public information officer, get a press release out. Fortunately, we were able to, they were able to identify the owner and the pet, who were actually getting ready to leave. They were from Pennsylvania down here visiting. They got hold of them in time. But anyway, so the dog has been quarantined. The leash law, the person, the owner was charged with violating the city's leash law. And the dog is currently under quarantine.
What's the penalty for, yeah, what's the penalty for?
Penalty, it's, I wanna say it's, I wanna say it can be fairly severe. Be perfectly honest with you, I don't know if it's a class three equivalent, a class three or class four, but I will, I'll find that out and get it for you. I know, I'm sorry. I feel bad now.
It seems like it's a pretty big exception, though, if you don't have to have your dog on a leash, if he, you know, responds to voice command. Everybody could say, yeah, sure, my dog responds to voice commands. I mean, is that an exception that other jurisdictions have? I haven't heard of such a-
It is fairly common with local ordinance, with counties, with both Arlington and Fairfax County. It allows, it takes some of the restriction off of an owner. Not all dogs are bad. They can be trained. And if you're just getting your dog outside and taking him back in, obviously, there would be so many restrictions on people, just even taking your dog out into your own yard. So yeah, it is common that there is an exception, as long as your dog is on voice command, if you have a well-trained dog. But allowing your dog to run at large is actually what the offense is that is being charged. And actually, I believe, the more I think about it, I think it is actually a class-two misdemeanor. I think it can be a jailable offense, but-
And how about not providing information to someone? In other words, your dog bites someone, you refuse to give them information and you leave. Is that, would they be charged with that or could they have been charged? Should they have been charged with that?
There's not an ordinance that specifically addresses that.
I don't know. Maybe it's something, I don't know if anybody wants to give any thought to, but I read about all this and I was horrified that, you know, a kid can be bitten by someone, a pit bull or something like a pit bull. Person leaves and they're, you know, just hanging high and dry on public property in a school. So if anybody thinks there maybe should be some changes, I certainly would welcome hearing any changes.
Wow. Ira is gonna weigh in on this one. This is gonna be a doozy.
I was bitten by a dog here, not so long ago.
That explains it, Ira.
So you fully agree with-
Incorrect name. So I wouldn't mind. I support Dave Tartar's view.
Holy cow!
Ah! Let's end the meeting now.
Somebody doesn't fess up to who it is who owns it, who's with the dog, and you find out, there should be some additional penalty.
All right.
Well, certainly having to start the course of rabies, that is a big deal.
No, I know.
And it's painful.
So all right, we'll do some research into that and get a report back to council. Yeah, and what can be done under stay-along. All right, thank you.
And if we could just quickly take the opportunity to commend Officer Becky Keenan and Susan Finirelli for their quick response, 'cause speed was, speed was key on that and it was a good outcome.
Very good outcome. All right. Before we go into closed session, if we can take a look at the calendar and any comments. So on the 11th, we're adding the Tanner Hill Reserve mixers project. All right. In next week's calendar, the reason for the deferral of the affordable housing is we don't have all the boards and commissions weighing in yet. Is that right, Wyatt?
That's correct. So the request is deferred to the 11th.
But we still need to do a formal deferral?
Actually, the-
It's a resolution, so I don't-
I'll check with KB on that, but I think it was advertised for the 28th, but I'll confirm that.
I actually advertised it as for the 11th, 'cause I saw that it was being deferred.
Okay, so we're in good shape.
Okay, so that just comes off the calendar?
That's right.
All right. So we should have a relatively short meeting, depending on how, this is the affordable housing comes off, 'cause not all boards and commissions have weighed in. And we may, depending on how the conversation goes tonight, we may need to add a closed session. All right. Anything else on the calendar?
Is the April 29th, the 5th Monday, are we having a work session then or is that, I know we talked earlier about not having 5th Mondays. Are we, I mean, there's nothing on there.
I don't know how that got on there. I think that's a formal council policy.
So that's not a-
The bad news is, is that that whole period, you're typically in two meetings a week for budget season.
Thanks, Wyatt.
We can just do one a week.
And one thing I just want council to be aware of that Wyatt's working on, on the, I believe it's the first reading of the budget ordinance. I believe it falls under, it's the first night of spring break, so we got a request, if at all possible, can we move it? And I believe it's also the first night of Passover, so we may need to revisit the budget calendar.
That's on the 25th?
Yes.
I won't be here on the 18th. It's a work session. I don't know that you-
It's a budget work session?
Yeah. It's a work session.
Which date was that? I'm sorry, I missed it.
It spoils my perfect record. But the 18th isn't, oh. March 18th I would be gone. And it's possible I will also be gone on the 16th, but I'm not certain. I will be back for the work session.
Yeah, and I just took a look at the calendar. The 25th does look like it's the first night of Passover.
So it might be moved to-
Well, Wyatt's working on the schedule.
My calendar says that.
Your calendar says that?
So maybe it gets moved to the Tuesday?
The Tuesday is the second night of Passover.
Oh, so no Passover. Is that what you're saying?
So maybe Wednesday.
Okay. I didn't know how many.
Save some matzoh soup for me.
I didn't know how many.
You're welcome to come over for our interfaith seder, which likely is not gonna happen this year, given our home situation right now.
So that'll be rescheduled for whatever.
Well, Wyatt's gonna work on it. So we've had a request in from a school parent as well. All right. All right. Anything else on the calendar? Okay. Why don't we move to closed session and all we're gonna do when we come out is, are we doing a motion, John, when we come out?
We may have a motion.
So we may be conducting business matters when we come out, so I think we'll need the TV crews here.
We don't need to record.
We don't need to record? Okay. So for the benefit of the public, we are gonna be conducting public business when we come back out. Upon a motion made by council, and before we go into closed session, I own property at 243 Gundry Drive. As previously disclosed, as a prudential matter, I can consider these matters fairly objectively in the public interest on the matters that we'll be going to closed session about. Upon a motion made by council member-
Barry.
And seconded by council member-
Jahan.
Tartar.
Yeah, Tartar, okay.
And passed by a voice vote of city council. Council went into closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711A29 of the Code of Virginia for discussion of the award of public contracts involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offerers or discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion open being would adversely affect the bargaining or negotiating strategy of the public body, to which- To which, John, are we talking interjurisdictional as well? Interjurisdictional contracts and two pursuant to section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia for the consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. And consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. For purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel of reasonably basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subsection shall be constructed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter to which Atlantic. And, okay. Mayor Baruch, yes? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yeah.
Councilmember Barry?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Callan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pepe's absent. Councilmember Tarter?
Yes.
Okay. We are going in a closed session at 10:20. Yeah. Why don't we take a quick five-minute break before we regroup? John, where do you want us to go? In here?
Do you stay here?